One second, everybody. All right.
All right.
I'm gonna call to order one more time. Let's do roll call again.
Okay, Councilor Ripma. He's not back yet.
He was there.
He just had to give us a minute, so.
That's okay, we can keep going. Yeah, I'll let you know.
Councilor Caswell?
Here.
Councilor One? Is he gonna be absent or late?
He'll be late.
Councilor White?
Here.
Councilor Wittrin?
Present.
Councilor Glantz?
Present.
Mayor Lauer?
Here.
Any agenda updates? Mr. Ray Young.
No, Mayor, the agenda is as written tonight.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item Number Two. A Councilor Ripma just logged on. Public comment, public comment on non-agenda consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of the council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. So I'm gonna start on Zoom. Anybody on Zoom, go ahead and unmute yourself. I'll call on you and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody. Anybody in council chambers, now's the time, go ahead and just approach the table, state your name and city of residence for the record.
My name is Kathy Scott, and I was a Traptown officer.
My allergies are kicking in, so I apologize.
I gave you a list of some of my concerns. My main concern is the corner of Buxton and Historical Columbia River Highway. My son almost got hit on his motorcycle the other morning. Because the people that are churning from Historical Columbia River Highway and going up Buxton, they don't stop, they just keep going. And they don't understand that the people in the left-hand turn don't stop either. And I've seen people go, like when we're going even to turn left to go towards the freeway, numerous cars going back and forth and they don't stop at the stop sign. They need either a flashing light or something to let people know there is a stop and the sign needs to be changed. I gave you a copy of the street there, and they don't even have a say, "Stop coming," or "Stop." That's a minor thing. I know it's the county's problem when I talked to somebody in the Traptown public, you know, the City Hall, they said this is gonna be another concern, but there's... I sat out there one day for a half hour and I saw numerous cars, just, they don't stop, they just keep going. I'm surprised there aren't more accidents, and I don't know how many there are. But I just know my son on his motorcycle has gotten hit almost twice, and he's turning to go up Buxton. From now on, he's going up 257th to Cherry Park to come down my house on Beaver Creek. So I don't know if there's anything that can be done, because Monloma County isn't doing anything. But it's a safety concern for many people, and I know my neighbor said, "Yeah, I almost got hit there." So, any questions or anything?
No, it's...
I will just say that Deputy Boar and Captain Asbo are sitting in the room as we speak, and I know Deputy Boar loves to keep drivers safe, so I'm sure he'll put that on his list of places to stop and watch for stop sign scoff laws. I agree with you, I thought they should have put the flashing LED lights like at Fred Meyer.
Yes.
I agree with you a hundred percent, but it's the county, I tried, they couldn't abide on it. And they did just recently do some improvements to add some more kind of barriers, so it makes it more noticeable, they put a big planter there, they are trying, but I agree with you, something more needs to be done.
But when you're coming and going from the east to the west, the sun shines sometimes, and you don't see the sign that says "Stop" with the orange flag on it, because it's pushed in with the sidewalk area.
Yeah, we understand, and we will continue to move with the county to push that. Ultimately, the county has said it probably warrants a stoplight there, but they don't have the million dollars to put a stoplight there yet.
Can't they just do a, not an actual signal, but just a flashing light?
We'll keep working with them, and there's two ways to deal with this, one is we keep working for improvements, and second of all, enforcement is also helpful. So we will try both of those.
Okay, yeah, I'm just doing this for my son, you know? He's thirty-two, and he's working tonight, so otherwise, he would have been here.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishes to make public comment, now's the time, go ahead and approach the desk, state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, I'm gonna close public comment. So we are going to move on to Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda 3.1 Minutes, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting. Councilor White moves adoption, do I have a second, seconded by Councilor Wittrin?
Should I do a roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay. Let's see here, Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Wittrin?
Yes.
Councilor Glantz?
Yes.
Councilor Ripma?
Yes.
Councilor Caswell?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to Agenda Item Number Four, a report from Monloma County Sheriff's Office, Chief of Police Doug Asbo. You have the desk.
Yeah, they're gonna, come on up, guys, have a seat. Deputy Boar, yes, you cannot sit in the back, so...
I mean, you can, but the question is, should you?
No, you shouldn't. Tonight, Mayor, it's not the regular annual report that we usually do in Monloma County Sheriff's Office, we will be doing that in the fall, but right now, tonight, I wanted to update the council on two things. First of all, is the changes to how we do the Summer Beach Deputy, and the second thing is, I wanted an opportunity, without saying it this way before tonight, to honor Deputy Boar for the things he does, because we don't see a lot of things he does, doesn't make the news, and it was a big decision for the citizens to afford to add that extra resource deputy just for Troutdale, so that's the second part. But for the first thing, is talk about the changes that we made in the Summer Beach Patrol. Under the contract with Monloma County Sheriff's Office, they are required to provide nine-hundred-and-fifty hours of beach patrol, being roughly Memorial Day and Labor Day, essentially mirroring what the Troutdale Police Department had done before that. Troutdale Police before that would take the two resource deputies at the school district, when they're off for the summer, they would send them down to the beach to patrol the beach. But unlike our contract with Monloma County Sheriff's Office, there was no requirement that they had to serve on the beach, and the chief could routinely, if it was a rainy Friday, send them other places, do other things for the citizens and make good work out of it. Well, it became readily apparent, especially in the last couple summers, that the sheriff, to their credit, interpreted the contract to be, yeah, we had to have somebody in the park nine-hundred-and-fifty hours during the summer, regardless of weather conditions. And in talking with Captain Asbo and his supervisors, we all agreed that, one, that scenario is not good for the deputies, it can be very boring for a deputy, and it's also not good for the citizens, because we don't have productive law enforcement going on if they're just sitting down there. So Captain Asbo and I worked and put together a memo of understanding that tweaked that part of the agreement, so that we are now designating that individual as the Summer Resource Deputy, so it's not tied just to the beach. Their primary responsibility will be forty hours a week, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, four-ten-hour days, they are generally assigned to the park, Land O' Park and the beach. However, if there are days where it's rainy, it's quiet, nothing's going on, we have released the Kraken, as they say, to be able to go to other parts of the city to do enforcement work that's needed. And so every two weeks, the captain and I will talk about it and kind of ask if he's available, have him do X, Y, and Z, so that we get productive time out of that deputy. So that's the one thing we've done. To get the other four-hundred-and-seventy-five hours, the Sheriff's Office is going to be using reserve officers a lot to come on down to the park, and hopefully in twos, on weekends when it's hot, use those hours down there with a couple of reserve deputies. So we're still gonna get the nine-hundred-and-fifty hours, but we're just getting a lot more concentrated work when the beach is busy, and we're getting additional law enforcement around the city where it's needed. So that's kind of the first report I wanted to give the council and the citizens of that change, so we're hopefully gonna get a better law enforcement bang for our buck. But the second thing is, is that as I get internally reports weekly from Deputy Boar, I mean, something we've asked him to do, because he is our resource deputy, let me know what he did that week, what's going on? And we talk, you know, on a regular basis, and he just tells me stories all the time about different things, different enforcement things he does that never makes the newspaper. So I just thought, because it is a very significant investment we'd make on our budget each year, that it would be good to laud his efforts, and the captain is here to do it for him, because I'm sure he wouldn't do it himself, he may show off big fish that he catch, but he won't talk about the great bad guys that he catches. But I just want to introduce again to everybody Captain Asbo and Deputy Boar, and Captain Asbo is just gonna talk about a few things this year that Deputy Boar was involved in.
Thank you, sir. Evening, honorable mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me here tonight to talk a little bit about some of the extraordinary work that your Traptown Community Resource Deputy Nick Boar is doing. The work of a Community Resource Deputy is both challenging and rewarding. One of the biggest challenges to being a Community Resource Deputy is balancing the need to address the often non-criminal criminal liability issues, as well as community engagement and outreach against needing to attend to serious criminal matters. Deputy Boar excels at all those things. I wanted to bring your attention to just a few of the things that Nick has done to ensure that Traptown remains a safe neighborhood for the community at all. In February of this year, Deputy Boar worked with another deputy on a case that began as just a simple traffic stop. During that traffic stop, it was found that the driver was uninsured, and that vehicle was required to be towed. During the inventory of that vehicle, Nick located cocaine, scale, packaging material, marijuana, and a unserialized firearm. The suspect was arrested on distribution of cocaine and carrying concealed weapon, and currently charges are pending on that individual. In early March, Deputy Nick Boar volunteered to participate in swift water rescue training. Students in this training are taught to self-rescue and victim rescue, and are taught how to navigate a number of different types of hazards in the water. For those of you that may not have swam in our local rivers in March, this was a cold and grueling training process. Deputy Boar volunteered to do it, saying that, quote, "Everything that was trained was relevant to the types of river rescue calls I received in the summertime on Sandy River." The city of Troutdale is purchasing Nick the appropriate rescue gear, so that he can become an additional lifesaving resource along the riverways all year round. In April, Nick took part in a stolen vehicle recovery mission. That mission was in conjunction with not only our deputies, but with the Portland Police Bureau, and it was based here out of Troutdale and focused on this Monloma County. The combined results to which Nick contributed were astounding. Just as an example, during that mission, one in every four stops resulted in a recovered stolen vehicle. One in every three stops resulted in an arrest, and one in every three stops resulted in an arrest warrant being served. So that was good work, a lot of folks got stolen vehicles back that had been missing. In May, Deputy Boar undertook some additional exceptional police work that really had significant results. Deputy Boar came in contact with an individual at our local motel that he found was on probation. During his contact with that individual, he contacted the probation officer. Together, they continued to speak with this individual, and Deputy Boar saw that this individual had a backpack, and we could see in the inside backpack that there was ammunition inside that backpack. Deputy Boar seized that backpack. As he continued the investigation, he looked into the suspect's vehicle and found that there was a firearm underneath the seat. Deputy Boar wrote search warrants, applied for search warrants for both the backpack and the vehicle, and the search warrants led to the recovery of over a pound of methamphetamine, two pistols, a rifle, and a beat again. The suspect was a convicted felon who is now looking at some potential federal charges on top of the likely eighteen months in prison after violating the terms of this probation. These are just a few of the incidents that Nick has taken part of, and these are all in addition to the outreach he does with the business community and the community at large. Deputy Boar is a credit to the Sheriff's Office, he's a credit to the city of Troutdale, and a credit to himself. Deputy Boar epitomizes community policing and commitment to the communities we serve. I thank you for the time, if you have any questions or comments, I'm happy to take those out.
Councilor White? Yeah, Councilor Wittrin?
Yeah, I would just say, even with my time on the Public Safety Committee and everything we've heard about Nick, and it's all been extremely positive, especially his community policing, his interactions with all the neighborhoods, and it's all been fantastic, and I think we're all appreciative to have him on board here in Traptown, and he's a great asset. Hopefully we'll keep him for a long time to come, thank you.
Yeah, I know Nick, I remember when he worked at Jack's Snack and Tack across the street from my house. Kind of watched him grow up, and he knows this town inside and out. If something's going on, he's gonna figure it out, and he's pretty smart, and helps a lot when you know the community. I remember when he swore in as an officer, he proposed to his wife for that night, and I think, I think he has a couple of kids now, so we're glad to see you, would like to see more, following your example, take the job seriously like you do, I feel safer knowing you're out there, so thank you.
Yeah, I'll reiterate the same thing they said, I appreciate you for what you do, I have the utmost respect for you personally, but even more so professionally, in knowing that you're out there helping our community, keeping it safe, doing the dirty work. I really appreciate it. If this was like TV mayor stuff, I would have a big giant key for you and get it to you. It's not like TV mayor stuff, we'd be sitting in my office drinking brandy after this or something like that, but I don't have an office, and I don't drink, so. But just know, I appreciate you, and I got your back, man, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do, and thank you, Chief.
And if I could, Mr. Young just reminded me of another incident, which he thought was important to share.
My favorite story of all.
So, in this incident, Deputy Boar and several other deputies went to take into custody an individual that lived in the city of Troutdale that had several misdemeanor felony warrants. This individual did not want to comply and chose not to try not to go to jail, so he got on the motorcycle in his garage and attempted to weave out between deputies on his motorcycle and to elude capture, and Deputy Boar was able to wrangle him and get a hold of him off the motorcycle and get him into custody before a pursuit ensued, or this individual had a number of pretty violent felony warrants, got back out into the community, so, another piece of work by Deputy Boar.
Well, I laugh, but it's amazing, man, so thank you, keep doing what you're doing. Whatever you need from us as far as support, let us know.
Councilor Wittrin have any questions? I thought I saw you raising your hand.
No, I just made a comment in support of everything that's done, and all the comments, all the good work that I've heard on, when I was on Public Safety Committee, that you've done such a great job, but I also think in the future, these comments here go towards budgeting future resource deputies.
Yep, absolutely. Councilor Glantz?
Yep, I also wanted to thank you for your service, and then make a quick note on the Columbia Highway and Buxton, I damn near got rear-ended this past weekend because I stopped. It was like cars were going, and I stopped, and the car behind me, I could hear the brakes hit, so.
Just in case, if you gave a copy of the written testimony tonight, I'm handing that to Captain Asbo. Thank you.
Anything else from council? All right, I am gonna open it up to public comment for this report, so I'll just let anybody in the public address our deputy and our chief, if anybody wishes to do so. Anybody in Zoom wishes to address our Deputy Boar or Captain Asbo, now's the time, go ahead and unmute yourself, and state your name and city of residence for the record. Not seeing anybody? Anybody in council chambers? I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna ask you to step up to the table again, yeah? And state your name and residence again?
I just have a quick question. My name is Kathy Scott. Long time ago, when we had Traptown Police, we had Neighborhood Watch, do you have anything like that now?
We do not.
Are you planning to do anything like that?
So, real quick answer to that, Neighborhood Watch is a national program that's not actually run by law enforcement, it's run by communities that are interested in doing it, but we will absolutely, and Nick will absolutely support a program if your community chose to have Neighborhood Watch.
Yeah, we have, we have one on our street on Beaver Creek, so we haven't had any problems, not like what's going on here.
And if you like to have, if your, you know, your Neighborhood Watch gets together and wants to have some discussion with Deputy Boar or in part of the Sheriff's Office, what happens?
Yeah, I used to have parties, do you remember? I used to have over three hundred, yeah, over three hundred people at show for the Neighborhood Watch party.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, appreciate it. Anybody else? All right, thank you, again, it's appreciated what you both do.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item Number Five, a resolution modifying a clause of the Summer Concert Series Agreement and subsequent amendments with McMinimans and Mr. Ray Young?
Thank you, Mayor. Troutdale and McMinimans have had a very long, successful relationship and partnership with their summer concert series. We first contracted with them probably over fifteen years ago to reach an agreement on how those things would be conducted. The staff report lays out, I think fairly well, the history that we have had with McMinimans, and honestly, over these years, it's pretty clear that McMinimans has brought many great artists to our community for concerts in Traptown. As Mr. Trumpke well knows, the famous Diana Ross was there a couple of weeks ago, and he and his wife got to enjoy Diana Ross, who's still...
And I missed a meeting.
I wasn't gonna say that that's why you stood us all up, but it was a good reason. That's just one of the many examples of what the kind of concerts they have down the street from here. Over the years, we've tweaked their contract a number of times, and in two thousand nineteen, McMinimans, at their offering, we didn't ask for it, at their offering, they said, hey, you know, the rental school district lets us use their field, which was declared excess property, to the east of them for overflow parking, how about if we give them two dollars a ticket from the first two concerts of the year, which adds up to probably fifteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars a year as a donation? And so they started doing that, I think in the two thousand twenty, the COVID year, first COVID year. And during that time, McMinimans, all the years, has kept the field mode, which is great for fire danger, they've kept it policed, and they keep trespassers off it. Well, however, about a year ago, the rental school district, from their perspective, kind of out of the blue, said, "We want a formal lease, and we want you to agree to a certain lease payment for that field." And so ultimately, they agreed to pay the rental school district fifteen thousand dollars for six months lease on that field, and rentals asked for, and they gave them a ten percent increase every single year for, I think, the five years of the contract, a fairly generous increase each year. Well, justify, McMinimans kind of scratched their head and says, "Well, it seems like now we're paying twice for the field, since Reynolds has changed the rules of the game on our use of the field." And though, even though they are paying additional monies, McMinimans' heart has always been to bless the community with that money. And so they said, you know, "We don't want to stop blessing the community with that money, we just would rather go somewhere else and not double pay for the field." And so they came to us about a month ago and said, "How about if we just redirect that donation to somewhere else in the community?" And so that's what you see in the staff report, is that they would like to give one quarter of it to the Traptown Historical Society, one quarter of it to the Trauma Intervention Program, which we've supported for years, one quarter to the Friends of the Columbia River Highway, and one quarter to Reach Community Development, another strong community organization. And so that's what they're asking, is that we can just make that small change in the contract to redirect their donation to those other entities. I have spoken with the rental school district, and I will tell you, it's a different administration than it was when this demand came down from the rental school district, and they kind of shrugged their shoulders and said, "Sorry, we weren't really involved, and we don't know what to say." So I appreciate that that happened in their situation, but at this point, they haven't given me any more direction or response regarding, I talked to them last week, so, anyway. So I thought DJ was, oh, he's in the back. You got a haircut, remember? I was looking for the ponytail. So DJ is from McMinimans, if council has any questions, me or him, feel free.
Honey, come on up. Come on down, there's no big wheeler prizes, though.
Hi, DJ Simcoe.
Happy to have you.
Thanks.
Comments or questions from council?
I just have a comment, you know, I appreciate you guys, your willingness to support each of those groups is an excellent choice, by the way, and, you know, for a long time, you guys have given the Spark Society a booth for free, and I love the fact that McMinimans has saved a lot of these old buildings, and it's a real treat to go to Edgefield and see the old architecture and the brickwork, so I just wanted to thank you for that. I don't know if you can give us an update on the county farm, I don't wanna catch you off guard, but we're all in anxious...
But we're gonna catch you off guard.
Yeah, I don't know, Ray might know more about it than I do now. It's, we're still gonna do it, it's probably a couple of years away, there's some other things that have to happen, the Halsey Road improvements, so, but it'll happen.
I will add to that, that I had lunch with Mike McMiniman and his son, Dan, a couple of months ago, and they are fully committed to the development on the north side. COVID, of course, slowed a lot of things down, but they're fully committed to a development on that side of Halsey, but DJ is correct, the whole half, the whole street improvement stuff that you develop is gonna be a big hurdle, and that's something that Main Streets on Halsey is also talking about, and something that we're gonna have to do with the county, and McMinimans are down the road, but it is a couple of years away. Hopefully, the jail gets redeveloped sooner than that.
Yes.
As the next major development.
Yes, probably still two years away. Just, still coming out of COVID, so it's getting better, still, you know, it takes a little while. I do want, one thing, when Ray was talking about the distribution of those four nonprofits, it wouldn't actually be evenly divided, the Historical Society would get more, and Reach would get more, and then the plan, we're trying to do with orders next year, it's very difficult to get the bands to agree to donate money or have a ticket fee, like they have, they have their own ticket fees for charities, we're trying, or I'm trying to work on something next year to where, instead of two bucks per ticket the first two shows, it's a smaller amount for all the shows, hopefully there's more money, and there's more charities that we can give to. It's complicated, but for this year, we're pretty adamant about not giving that money to the rental school district. Now, I have a meeting with the new superintendent and his deputy here in a couple of weeks, they want to repair our relationship, and we've always had a great relationship with them, the stuff that happened a year ago was driven by one person individually, and it caused some frustration, but I think we can get back on the right path, so.
That's good to know. I'll say, I think this move, and you, McMiniman's willing to take on this and donate generously to some important organizations around Traptown and East County, I think it just further solidifies... to some important organizations around Troutdale and East County, I think it just further solidifies our partnership. And I appreciate it, and I'm not gonna speak for the rest of council, but I appreciate it and it just, it speaks volumes. I had, I'm sure you have lots of people from all over the world come and stay and say how great it was, but we had a private event at my business this last weekend and I had a couple hundred people from all over the west coast and a couple of people from the east coast, and they were staying at McMinimans. There was probably about a dozen of them staying at McMinimans, and they came and they just were in awe that we were so fortunate to have something like, they called it an adult wonderland.
Yeah.
In, in our, yeah, in our town. One of them said, he said that it reminded him of college. And he was in his early sixties and said it was like going back to college again and it was so great. But anyways, it's just, it's, it's felt all around, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Glantz.
A quick question, do you consider the Mountain Jazz Festival competition? Or is that just helping to bring more people and music to the area?
It would just be bringing more people. We don't consider it to be competition. It's like, I mean, we'd be happy if more restaurants and hotels opened nearby, more venues. It just brings more people to our place eventually.
Thanks.
Counselor Rittman.
I have a question, maybe for our city attorney, but I, I just want to declare that I'm president of the board of the Troutdale Historical Society. I don't believe that's a conflict of interest for me to participate in this. I'm gratified that McMinimans has wanted to support us. We're the biggest fan of all of the Edgefield, whole Edgefield complex. But does that present a conflict of any kind? I, I of course don't personally gain from any donations, but.
No, and the, you would have to recuse yourself and step aside if you had a financial interest or received funds from the Historical Society, but because you don't, it's simply an interest of yours and you're allowed to vote on things that interest you as a city council. So you're, you're fine on that. Now, having said that, remember that the Government Ethics Commission says that what I say doesn't matter. It only matters what they say.
Oh boy, that's a big help, but.
Some sass in that comment.
I, for the record, I am president of the Board of the Historical Society and big fan of McMinimans myself personally too, so thanks.
Thank you.
You know, I guess I should also declare that my wife is on the Troutdale Historical Society board, and she has your main competition with the Barnyard Conference. She started that and books the groups.
Nice.
For the record.
Well, before we take this resolution, I'm gonna open it up to public comment. So we'll give it a couple seconds, or a couple minutes and see if anybody wants to speak on behalf of the community, and we'll go from there. So public comments open on agenda item number five, a resolution modifying a clause of the summer concert series agreement and subsequent amendments with McMinimans. On Zoom, if you'd like to make comment, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody. Anybody in council chambers tonight wishes to make a comment? All right, public comments closed. If there's nothing else from council, entertain a motion.
I'll move adoption of the resolution amending the clause of the summer concert series agreement and subsequent amendments with McMinimans, Inc.
Seconded by Counselor Wittrin.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Wittrin.
Yes.
Counselor Glantz.
Yes.
Counselor Rittma.
Yes.
Counselor Caswell.
Yes.
All right, passes. Thank you, sir. Keep doing what you're doing. Appreciate it. Thanks.
And mayors, not too late. Welcome to the council meeting, DJ. Glad to see you. See y'all later. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everybody. We're gonna move on to agenda item number six, a resolution establishing a solid waste collection fees and rescinding resolution number 2521. Mr. Legura, environmental specialist, the table is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilors.
Good evening.
I think we had some, yeah, no worries. I'm having Zoom issues, so we'll see if this will work. Okay, no problem.
So how's everything else going?
It's going well.
Good. I thought I had the packet up and I did not.
All right, so this is a resolution establishing solid waste collection fees, as mentioned. Next slide, please. For just a little bit of background, we employed Chris Bell as our consultant of Bell and Associates. Chris has been doing this with, for our community for a number of years and for another, for a number of other municipalities in the region doing rate reviews such as ours. The rate review process, just to review again, it's a review that examines the financial results of operation, operations of our hauler to determine the cost of service. Its Waste Management is our hauler, our exclusive hauler, and they submit on an annual basis the detailed cost report summarizing the prior year's costs and revenues. The exclusive franchise agreement with Waste Management has an operating margin, a rate of return between eight and twelve percent. This past year for 2022, they reported a operating margin of seven point six percent. So that triggers them the ability to come before us and request a rate review, and in this case, an increase. Next slide, please. So there was three main factors contributing to this increase of the collection rates this year. One is kind of a proactive, one against the metro fees and taxes, that they were gonna be raising the regional, regional system fee and their excise tax. So that was due, that went into effect July first of this year, after they had increased their regional system fee and excise taxes last year, when we also did a rate review and increase. All the private transfer stations are required to collect that metro fee and taxes, and they are charged on the mixed solid waste per ton. There's also transportation costs, and this is assuming that Waste Management shares a contractual agreement, as Metro does, with the company that does the hauling of waste to the landfills. That has a transport expense, fuel expenses that have also increased over the past years. And then there's finally a disposal cost increase at the landfill where our wet solid waste is taken. Next slide, please. Here's the proposed rates, just a slice of some of the residential services at the curb side and commercial service with the containers. As you can see, for the residential side, the more popular size, which is thirty-five gallon, is less than a dollar increase. The sixty, ninety gallon, obviously around a dollar, a little over a dollar. And on the commercial service side, the containers are also experiencing an increase as well. This is overall less than last year's increases. Next slide, please. In comparison to other East County, East Monoma County jurisdictions, we are second from the least expensive. So that's still good compared to Fairview, City of Gresham, and City of Wood Village. Final slide, please. And that's really all I had to summarize that. If I had any questions, I also have Chris Bell of Bell and Associates on the call here and Waste Management representatives as well, Dave Huber and Mike Jeffries.
All right, do we have any questions, comments or questions from council? Counselor Glantz.
We talked about this before, as I recall, when Waste Management came to us with this. Is this the same increase that we talked about then?
When we were looking at extending their franchise agreement? Yeah, you know, I can't remember Counselor Glantz offhand if that was or was not. I know that we did a review, a rate review and increase last summer as well at the longest timeline in July. I'm not remembering, though, honestly, the conversation when we did the franchise extension.
And in terms of transportation expenses, are there certain expenses? Or is it just what they say constitutes transportation?
Um, well, I, I might defer to Chris Bell to help answer that. He.
Yes, there's a, interesting enough, there's a Chris Bell, Bell and Associates. Waste Management utilizes the same transportation company that Metro does, which is Walsh Transportation, which is also located in Troutdale. And contractual agreements are specifically for the transportation are adjusted annually by CPI adjustment. And this year and last year, those CPI adjustments were rather significant because of the larger CPI. So that's, that's the primary cost driver for transportation.
And CPI stands for cost per?
Consumer Price Index.
Consumer Price.
It's a combination of two things. It's the CPI and then there's a fuel, fuel surcharge. So the combination of those two costs are really what's driving. And then there's also CPI adjustment component in the landfill. And it's, if I recall correctly, it's about eighty percent of the CPI adjustment. So the landfill rate decrease was, was slightly slower than, than the trucking cost. But both of them did see a significant increase due to a high CPI index in the prior year.
There was a metro meeting that I listened in on, and they said part of the reason for the rate increases from Metro had to do with how much less recycling people have been doing since COVID. Did you see any?
No, no, that's not correct. No, the reason, the reason the increases for Metro are twofold. Number one, same, same escalation for the, they, they run not only disposal and transportation, as Ryan was talking, was addressing, but they also operate a transfer station with a similar CPI agreement between Metro and Recology. And then the other piece is the regional system fee, which is primarily driven by labor costs. And so Metro's been adding a significant amount of people and services over the last few years.
Thank you.
Counselor Wittrin.
So we're, your seven point six percent rate of return on collection services, which is outside of the eight and twelve. So when everything is said and done, where, where are you estimating that they will be at with the new rate increases?
Yeah, this, this is kinda make them whole, I assume, and be within that eight to twelve rate of return operating expense.
I mean, are they gonna be just inside of eight? We're gonna be looking at another increase? Or we're gonna be twelve and we're not gonna have this discussion again for a while?
Yeah, that I may need to defer again to Chris if he has any idea.
Actually, yeah, there's, there's two answers, two questions here. The first one, will we have, will we be, will we be seeing you next year? And I can almost guarantee you, we're gonna be here next year because Metro has said over the next five years, and this is we're in year number two, that they will have at least a seven point seven percent increase in their tipping fee. So we'll be here next year to address the same issue. As far as the, the difference between, you know, whether this increase will keep them whole, the better person to ask that would be Mike Jeffries, and I know he'd be glad to come up and, and, and address that particular question with you guys.
Mr. Jeffries, come on down.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
City Council, I'm Mike Jeffries. I work for Waste Management. And to answer the questions that have been addressed, with this increase, we were actually on par to be inside that range of eight to twelve percent with the rates that we had previously approved. But had Metro, obviously, the inflation, the increase in costs were not really expected to be as high as they were, so that was unexpected. So as a result, the rate increase that we have before you is actually just to cover the increase in cost of disposal and not really address any of our operational issues or concerns. We feel like our rates are, should be okay, and I believe Chris is right. If Metro's gonna continue to raise rates by seven percent next year, we'll probably be back before you just to cover the disposal component of the total rate that makes up the rates that we charge in the city. Did I answer your question?
So you're anticipating being closer to eight than twelve?
I believe we'll probably be around ten percent this year, and then once the increase takes place next year, which will be another seven percent, then we'll probably be looking at another rate increase, perhaps in, you know, again, at this time next year, or perhaps maybe we can push it off till like January. But yeah, as long as we continue to see these increases in costs associated with Metro as far as the regional system fee and the excise tax, those are truly taxes that we get, we'll have to pay, and we'd obviously like to pass those on to our ratepayers, because it's really outside of our control, those costs.
And I'll, and I'll just say, I, I get where you're at, but I mean, as, if I'm getting a raise and I'm saying, hey, I'm getting an eight percent raise or a twelve percent raise, that's a pretty big budget disparity, right?
Right.
And as we look at Troutdale residents, we're just passing a cost onto them as well. And you're saying, hey, we're hitting the middle of ten. Does that make me feel better? Or you're saying, hey, we're gonna put off till January of the following year? Yeah, that makes me feel better, but I just want a little transparency. I'm just trying to get to the bottom of where we're at. So make sure that we're being honest to our citizens in Troutdale.
Certainly, certainly. And, you know, we are actually trying to do a lot of things in order to maintain our costs or actually try to reduce them. You know, the one thing that we talked about was, you know, with the new franchise agreement, looking at carts that have gravity locks on them, so we won't be using bungies, and therefore, we'll be a little more efficient with our time with our drivers. We'll probably be able to move to automated trucks versus semi-automated trucks. We're also looking at doing some rerouting to help improve efficiencies, and hopefully, those cost savings will help offset some of these disposal issues that we're talking about for Metro. Thank you.
Counselor White.
Yeah, I, I had a few questions, I think, when we were back in August. And I was wondering if we could include, because, you know, we have to have meetings about rent burden and rental housing. You know, taxpayers are being asked to subsidize rent for low-income people. And I'd like to understand why, why the duplexes is charged a much higher, they get charged a commercial rate. When, to me, you know, looking at from the outside, it shouldn't be any harder to service a duplex as a residential home.
I would, I mean, I would agree, actually, I would think a lot of times you find that the duplex rates, containers are gonna be heavier, because you're usually sharing containers. There's usually a little more contamination in the recycling, because you don't know who has actually, from our perspective, how that's happening. We can certainly take a look at that for sure and see if we could develop a rate schedule that would maybe mirror more of the residential side of what those rates are like versus the commercial rates, for sure.
Yeah, I understand, like, for the big apartment complex or something like that, you're most likely to be using dumpster and that sort of thing. And my concern is, as the rate goes up, that people will start getting rid of their yard debris container or their recycling container to save money. And then I think that'll translate to more environmental type problems and people doing more backyard burning, that sort of thing, so. I wish someone from Metro was here tonight, because they're, they're the culprit in this case. It's over five years, a sixty-nine percent increase, is what they're asking for. And they haven't given anything for the community enhancement funds. It's, it's stayed completely flat at a dollar.
That's true.
So it just seems outclassed to me, but, you know, it's also, you know, percent guaranteed is a pretty good margin, you know. Any businesses that they get out, if you guys, if they're still, I'm trying to work it out so we can work together and keep these costs down. Because they're, they're getting to a point where our residents. Because they're, they're getting to a point where our residents are going to fail out. That's all I'm trying to work with you guys. I understand Metro is a big part, they're not weird.
Think we scared off Metro last meeting, or a meeting, two meetings ago.
Yes, yes.
So talk to me about what happens if we don't approve this.
You know, that's, that's.
Let me, let me rephrase that. How active is your lobbyist arm in Metro and in Salem?
Um, I think Dave would probably be a better person to answer that. But yes, we do have our lobbyists in, in Salem. As far as Metro, I mean, it's kind of an interesting dynamics, you know, because, you know, we do own the landfill that the waste goes to, so that's one of our larger customers. And yet they're also our regulator of our transfer stations as well. You know, another thing that's impacting us too is, um, you know, if you, there's certain requirements that you have to meet in order to get allotted so many tons at your transfer stations. And one of those, uh, one of those, uh, uh, requirements was to meet or have your rate be the same or lower than Metro's. And if you did that, then you got an extra five or seven thousand tons. And, uh, you know, for us, you know, we, we couldn't do that because we have, you know, our, our costs at our facility is completely different than Metro's facilities. You know, we're now getting very close. I think our rates are within like three dollars and eighty-five cents or something like that. But as far as our disposal rates, but you know, that's one thing we don't do. We like to make sure that we treat each of our business, has to make money. We can't be subsidizing one business with another. And so we decided we wouldn't take that additional tonnage because we would not be profitable at that transfer station. So we decided to have less tons. And, uh, so I guess if this was not approved, we'd probably have to go back and see if there were some ways that we could possibly look to, um, I, I, I don't know. That would be something I have to take up with our management team and see if there's a solution that we could come up with. Maybe, uh, look at changing some services, things of that nature. Obviously work with you and the city to understand what could possibly be done, but.
I think we have a, I, again, I'm speaking for myself. I think we have a pretty good relationship with Waste Management. We appreciate the service model. We appreciate the, the, the level of service that Waste Management offers, offers our community. I've, don't have any complaints. I enjoy, uh, I don't enjoy the wind, but, uh, I will say it's just, like Counselor White was saying, it's just passing this on to the community. And then what Counselor Whitton was saying is just keeping that, keeping that transparency upfront and center when we do make these types of decisions and, and knowing that this decision isn't going to stop the next one next year or the two next year. You know, we, we had you here August, uh, last time and now we're back again. At some point, we need, I would love to have a broader conversation as to how we can take this conversation to Metro and have a different conversation with them as far as what they're charging and the rate of their fee increases to you.
Right.
And passing it on to our citizens. I feel like there's a grander conversation that should be had and I'm not sure if it's being had. I'm not sure if, if you're participating in those conversations or those decision-making processes, uh, down there in Portland.
Yeah, I think a lot of different communities are trying to have those conversations. And, uh, I know the solid waste managers seem to get together and talk about this a lot. And, uh, you know, they obviously felt a little blindsided with this last increase. And, um, unfortunately, you know, they're still subsidizing the rates that they have right now.
Yeah.
So hopefully, um, things get to be in a better situation going forward. And we can look at ways of perhaps recycling more. One of the things we're looking to do is bring in more dry waste into that facility, which will then allow us to have more, um, tons or revenue to cover fixed costs. So that way it should help reduce the type of increases that we look for having that are outside the, you know, pass through on fees and taxes that we get from Metro.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate that. Any other comments or concerns from council? All right, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Public comments open at this time on Zoom. If you would like to make a comment, uh, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody. Anybody in council chambers tonight wishes to make a comment, now's the time? I'll have, I'm going to have you step up to the table and take a seat and state your name and city of residence for the record. You don't have to state your address, just the city.
I'm Sherri Leonard of Troutdale. I just wanted to say, I wouldn't have said anything except that, um, Counsel White had said, I want to just reiterate, yes. I'm aware of people in my general area where I live that are burning garbage. And then I do know it was probably about two years ago, walking through Imagination Station. And, um, the field there in the dumpster, there was a truck waiting right there and they unloaded their garbage into the dumpster after it had been dumped. And then on my walk back through, there was a parts employee working. And I said, hey, I just wanted to mention it. And his comment to me, which I totally agree with in the sense that it's better that it's dumped there than in the community somewhere, side of the road or whatever. But I do believe if the rates go up so much, that that's what eventually just happens. People start dumping garbage places. So it doesn't necessarily encourage, um, I think what we all would like, a cleaner area, something.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Anybody else? No? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Uh, any other comments or questions from council for staff or Waste Management staff? Counsel Rittman?
Just a clarification, the, uh, the staff report and the, uh, agenda lists a resolution, uh, except for rescinding Resolution two, five, two, one. The resolution in the packet says, uh, rescinding Resolution two, five, six, nine.
Oh, yeah.
Is it?
That's a good catch. So the Resolution, uh, two, five.
Sarah is probably going to quickly pull up the resolutions themselves online here.
I think tonight's resolution is two, five, six, nine. And it's just reiterated inside item number three of the, of tonight's resolution is the wrong resolution number is what it seems like.
That, that seems logical, it's a higher number.
Yeah, let's list, Sarah, just verify really quick.
The most recent is two, five, six, nine. They both were remending solid waste fees, so I think the two, five, six, nine is one.
All right, then I'm prepared to make a motion. I move a resolution establishing solid waste collection fees and rescinding Resolution number two, five, six, nine.
Is that correct? Is that the correct resolution number? Yeah, okay, okay, it's verified, yeah. Seconded by Counselor Witron.
Mayor Lauer?
Uh, no.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Witron?
Yes.
Counselor Glance?
Yes.
Counselor Rittman?
Yes.
Counselor Caswell?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number seven, a resolution approving a development agreement with Home Forward. Mr. Ray Young, Mr. Ed Trumpke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. David Bernicker. Anybody else want to be introduced?
Mayor, staff and our legal counsel, Mr. Trumpke, is asking and recommending that the council approve the attached development agreement in the packet. The, the development agreement is with Home Forward. The council was fairly versed on the matter and the staff report lays out the history, I think, pretty well. Just in essence, just for the record and for the public, last fall, the planning commission, and in some sense, even though the city council was only addressing the right of way issue, in essence rejected the project as proposed by Home Forward. By way of what I mean by the project, the project is an affordable housing development with approximately, at the time, ninety-five units. The property is due west of where we're sitting right now. It's on property that is owned by Multnomah County. It is on property that is zoned for a multifamily dwelling. It is on property that will be financed, the development is going to be financed by the Metro Affordable Housing Bond from two thousand eighteen. And the project, and this is where Home Forward comes in, Home Forward was contracted to oversee the construction and the management of the Affordable Housing Project. They're a public agency with vast experience in handling these types of developments. While the, the history and the findings and the things from the planning commission are more involved, from all the hearings and, and the discussions that have been had on this product, project, two of the biggest issues for the council and the planning commission have continually popped up as being, the project has insufficient parking, that the concern is, is that there may be more need for parking than is what is planned for, which could adversely affect downtown residents and downtown businesses because of the location of the project right next to downtown. And there is, even though we don't have a parking study done yet, there is, um, a widespread belief, not unanimous, of course, that there is parking issues in downtown Troutdale. And that's what we're going to do, the parking study. But with this new project here, with parking that was less than what the code suggested, there was concerns. However, um, after that project was rejected, the rules of the game changed. On January first, uh, the state established rules that essentially, among many things, forbid the city from mandating any parking for affordable housing projects. Over the last several years, um, as we have seen, um, information from Salem and laws from Salem have been increasing to address the very real problem of overall housing, uh, in the metro area and in Oregon, and especially affordable housing in Portland and the metro area. So whether it was House Bill two thousand one, which came down a couple of years ago, which essentially, uh, got rid of all single-family home zoning and allowed you to put a fourplex on a single-family home zoning through what we affectionately call the CFEC rules, which is the most recent dictate from the state that eliminated any parking requirements for affordable housing projects. Every city in the state is facing more and more pressure and laws to reduce any perceived barriers to housing. And we are likely to expect more, uh, in the coming years as the issue continues to persist. Now, after January first, when those rules took effect, Home Forward submitted a new development plan that complied with all city development code as overridden by the state law, state rules. The development they propose now is approx, I believe eighty-five units, has a parking ratio of approximately one point four spaces per unit, which was less than what was proposed last fall. But remember, uh, they, we did not release the right of way to them, so that did impact their project. But the one point four is greater than what the law currently says they have to have. Now, um, when we got the project and staff, we did it at type two review, which we discussed at one time, I think with council, and we followed the applicable law and staff approved the project because it met all the applicable laws. An affected citizen filed for an appeal to the planning commission from that staff decision to make it a type three decision. The planning commission has been involved in this process and they cooperated with, um, in the hopes of a development agreement by continuing that appeal till August second. So that's been appealed, and that's been delayed until August second to see what happens with tonight's resolution. But whether it's before the planning commission, whether it comes to council later, whether LUBA, LUBA is the state review board that gets to have ultimate authority to decide these things. I will just say, and Mr. Trumpke will talk more to that in a minute, we are not confident that we would ultimately prevail to say that their current proposal is not allowable under law and we might be required to allow them to build it. Now, with this background, um, staff and Mr. Trumpke approached Home Forward to see if there was some off-ramp to this process that may delay the project, may keep the city in litigation for a period of time to resolve it. Now, by all rights, Home Forward could have said to the city, hey, you know, we tried last year, we worked the last year, it didn't work out. Our proposal is perfectly legal, so we're just going to wait to the process. They did not take that approach. They said to us, hey, let's talk. And we had had several meetings, uh, with Home Forward, uh, their council and their representatives. And always remembering that Home Forward's primary mission in life is to get more affordable housing out there for the citizens. And so that's their job number one, is to get more affordable housing out there. But Home Forward has also demonstrated us over the last several months, particularly as we've talked about this development agreement, that they want to make sure they're good neighbors because they're coming into our community and they want to come in under a situation that may not be perfect for all, but something that at least both parties can live with. And so it's under that atmosphere that we engaged in conversations with Home Forward. Considering that the city's biggest concern seemed to have been, uh, the reduced parking ratio and having to release our right of way, uh, we kept those as, um, primary goals to alleviate in our discussions with them. Uh, since they were already required to do street improvements in our right of way to the north, that's just standard for any development, we discussed with them, well, why not take that hard surface that you're putting in anyway and just make it more parking? In collaboration with them, their engineers and architects, they came up with an additional twenty-six parking spaces so that their ratios now, I believe, are roughly one point seven, uh, spaces per unit, even more than we had last fall in the proposals. It will cost them, of course, more to do this because they're having to do more work, not only in planning, but hard surfaces and reconfiguring everything. And storm, yeah, stormwater issues that they'll have to change because of a larger hard surface area. And the, uh, staff and Home Forward have both agreed that if the council approves, that the city would make a contribution of a hundred thousand dollars to these additional costs. Uh, the hundred thousand dollars would end up in the city getting in return fourteen surface parking spots. If you do the math, that's approximately seven thousand dollars per surface parking spot, which is half what the city paid for the surface parking spots in Mayor Square. So in terms of cost per surface parking spot, um, the city is getting fourteen parking spots at a very reduced rate. The parking is also critical, as everyone has seen, right across the street, the, uh, Wayfair Brewery Tap House is coming in and they are not required to have any parking pursuant to our downtown central code. And so we're going to have more pressure on that area. So getting these twenty-six additional spots, fourteen of which the city will be able to control as city parking spots, will definitely reduce that. And in all this planning, we will not be giving up our right of way. We will simply be giving them an easement, uh, to build across it. As I've said many times, uh, to this council, both as a group and individually, Troutdale is in a vice. On one hand, we have governments bigger, stronger and wealthier than us, whether it's Metro, Multnomah County or the state, and they're going to be sending dictates to us that we don't necessarily agree with. Our job is not to, uh, put a wall around ourselves, we can't. Our job is to make sure, and this is what staff takes to heart, is how can we take those dictates from other agencies and do the best we can with them to make sure that Troutdale always is unique and special? And we don't lose the flavor of Troutdale. And one of the concerns that we heard from the, uh, the citizens, the businesses and council was that low parking number caused us a great deal of concern of how it might impact the environment of downtown. So for this reason, staff believes that this development agreement is maybe not answer everything people would like in this development, either from Home Forward or us, but it is a way of balancing the needs to come up with a project that can move forward. Uh, at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Trumpke, who can talk about the legal side of this.
Thank you, Ray. I'm going to start out a little repetition just because, uh, I think it's necessary. The state has gotten more involved in local planning decisions. And, you know, some people even say that it's become a local planning, uh, agency of ninety members in Salem. And in some ways that is true. Most of what they're working on is housing. The, the real beginnings were about two thousand seventeen, when they broadened the definition of needed housing. And they imposed penalties on cities that deny applications for needed housing. And I think I've told you in sessions that my own law firm has gotten a couple of cities, penalties imposed on them for denying needed housing. And one of the, the things we're trying to do here is, is to ensure that that doesn't happen to Troutdale in, uh, approaching the city. to Troutdale in approaching the city, in approaching Home Forward to conduct these negotiations and discussions, is keep the city on the up and up. In about 2022, the CFAC rules that Ray talked about were adopted, and the city has appealed them. Oral argument is in the Court of Appeals tomorrow at about 1:30 in the afternoon. We don't expect any kind of a decision for at least four months, could be two years. Sometimes the courts real slow. So we don't know if and when, if we'll prevail, we don't know when that decision will come out. So in the meantime, this is pending and has to be processed under the existing law, and the court declined to stay the effectiveness or stop the effectiveness of the CFAC rules, even though we told them about this project. They said, no, we'll get to it quickly, and they put it on what they call an expedited calendar, but it'll still take a long time. The CFAC rules do seriously restrict the parking requirements for multifamily, especially affordable housing. So because of these things, the city's ability to require compliance with the code that protects the look and feel of Troutdale.
I was just Freudian slip.
It was. I was actually in a different city council where they were talking about protecting the look and feel of another city last night until, I don't know, something after 10 o'clock. And that was the reason for my slip. I apologize to council on that. And it also makes it hard to protect the desires of the citizens here, because the state has come in and cut back on the city's home rule powers. It used to be that this would be something that was simply left to the cities to work on and decide. That day has passed, and the state has said, no, you'll do what we want. And then to some degree, Metro has done the same. So as Ray said, we went down and met with Amande Saul, who's in the audience, Michael Foo, whom I think is online, and their council, Sarah Stocker-Curtis. And I want to say that, I want to thank them first for taking the time and the energy to do this, to meet with us, because they spent a lot of time, a lot of energy, and I'm certain, a fair amount of their reserve resources, their money, to renegotiate terms and to meet with us and work out this agreement. So they've really operated in good faith to do this. In terms of the negotiations, both sides dug down and determined really what is the most important part of all of the issues here that each had wanted to protect, and the other side, the other party, has accommodated that. The city has accommodated the need, the city recognizes the need for affordable housing, workforce housing in the city. And the city also wanted to protect its parking and wanted to help, get help raising funds for pedestrian and bike paths and those sorts of things. All of those got accommodated into the development agreement. And like any agreement, neither side got everything it wanted. Both sides had to give, and thank you for doing that, and thank your council for that. Now, this is a development agreement. The city doesn't normally enter into development agreements historically. They are, there are two kinds of development agreements, statutory and home rule. This is a home rule one. Statutory ones are in ORS Chapter 94, and they have a bunch of provisions. Other ones, other cities have adopted home rule ones in the past, and the courts have upheld them. So I'm confident that we can do this. And so because of that, the development agreement allows the city council, not the Planning Commission, and not anyone else, to adopt a contract with a developer to meet the unique needs of a site and a project. And the reason the council can do it is because the council is the governing body, the Planning Commission's not, and the others aren't. Now, in doing this, we've tried to keep the Planning Commission chair generally apprised of everything that's going on. I've never given him all of the details, but in general, he's known that we were talking, and generally, the kinds of things we're talking about, the parking and that sort of stuff. And that was as an accommodation, but, you know, I report to you, not to the Planning Commission, and that is my duty. So as every contract is, the development agreement is a voluntary action, and while it is a land use decision, it can be appealed to LUBA for 21 days after adoption, it also gives the city and Home Forward more flexibility than just applying the code technically. So this, you'll see that there are variances and things talked about in the development agreement, a lot of pieces, as well as the provision for parking that isn't in the code, and the requirement that, I believe it's going to be Amande Saul, who actually goes out, and I'm hoping it's you, because you're an effective speaker, Amande, to go out and try to raise funds for bike and pedestrian system here, which will help serve the city. So in negotiating it, Home Forward's been a good partner, a good negotiating partner. That means they held firm to their principles, as did the city, and both sides, I think, come out the better for it. Legally, that's the best result that I think we can get. And it's been a cooperative effort, and I think that if anybody in the press should report on that, they need to understand that this really is a cooperative effort. It's not that hostile, although all negotiations have their moments where people say, oh, we just can't do that, and we have to do this, and that's just the way the world is. Both sides have been very respectful to each other, their desires and their needs to serve the public, and both sides do serve the public. I think the development agreement serves the public very well, and that is a legal requirement, that any contract that the city enters into has to serve the best interests of the public. And my personal opinion is it does. You can disagree with that, but legally speaking, it does. So just to conclude, the terms are the best result I think that the city could come up with. I think that Home Forward gets a good result, it gets certainty, it can move forward if the agreement gets adopted, has certainty, a timeline to go with, and the city knows what it's going to get. It's getting parking that it wouldn't otherwise get, it's getting cooperation and help to raise the bike and pedestrian funds that it wouldn't otherwise be able to count on. So legally, it's a sufficient agreement, it complies with the law, and thanks for the opportunity to engage in some negotiations with them.
And Mayor, lastly, Mr. Bernicker is going to talk to, because there's been some discussions and maybe some misunderstandings about who this project serves, and so Mr. Bernicker's going to kind of give the council an understanding of who are going to be the customers for this project.
So, yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor Council. So when we talk about affordable or workforce housing, we're talking about housing for people who live and work in Troutdale. This is the FedEx worker who makes $17 an hour, it's the Amazon worker who's making $19 an hour, it's the folks down at Yield Pub down the block, or the food carts that are across the street are coming on board, it's also the folks that'll be maybe working at Owey Days Brewing or Wayfinder in the future. So workforce housing helps our Troutdale's rent burdened citizens. Typical full-time jobs in Troutdale area pay between $31,000 and $40,000 a year, which explains why over 50% of Troutdale renters are rent burdened, and why so many people can't afford to live in Troutdale, even if they work here. Looking at the, at this Troutdale's Housing and Needs Analysis from 2020, 58% of the people who are renters in this area are considered rent burdened, with 33% being severely rent burdened, and the other 25% being just rent burdened. Home Forward's units are for 60% AMI income families or below. The rent restricted units allows people to have some personal resources, more spending money for things that they need in their personal lives, as well as entertainment. It also allows them to put money away for things like a home if they so desire. The bottom line is, it keeps dollars local, which is good for the Troutdale economy. With that, I'll pass it back to the gentleman.
Thank you, I think that's all we have for the council at this point, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Council White.
I just had a few questions for, you know, I just thought we were, I think the 50% of Troutdale's citizens are rent burdened is incorrect. I've gone to a lot of, I've gone to almost every single rent burden meeting, and it was a much smaller number than that. I think Troutdale is the highest income in Multnomah County.
That might be true, but there's still a significant amount of folks that are rent burdened.
And then we also, with the addition of some new projects, we've met our goal for low-income housing. And this one, you can't really call it low-income housing, it's subsidized housing. And my understanding is that there'll be people released from prison, for example, that go to the top of that list for getting a place to live, because it's cheaper to subsidize their rent and get them into a place than to just have them re-found. And I heard that at the League of Organ Cities, when it was, when they called it the, what was it called before Home Forward, Housing Authority?
I thought Housing Authority.
Yeah, and I was shocked with that information. I thought it would be women and children first, but it's not. Someone that's getting out of jail or prison, and it's a financial decision to do that. So what is, I think, does anybody actually know the actual makeup of what we can expect to see over there?
I don't think that there is, that Home Forward or anyone else can pick and choose who is going to live there. The key pieces are that three studio units, only three, are listed to serve 30%, people who earn 30% of the average family income, okay? Three studio apartments. Their rent is still $559, which means that if you triple the 559, is what, $1,600 a month, person has to earn in order to qualify for one of those studios. So that isn't going to be someone who doesn't have a job. They still have to earn, take home, $1,600 a month, which isn't a lot, but there are people who earn that much. So if somebody simply gets out of jail, they have to have that $1,600 a month to qualify for one of those three units. The other units all have higher rents, and they go up as they get bigger. Plus, most of the units are, I believe, are at the 60% of AFI level, and that same studio for, there are eight studios for people who earn 60%, and the rent for that is $1,119, so $1,100. Added 50% to that to come up with another third, person still has to earn, what's, well, a third of, a half of 1,260, so it's around $1,700, $1,800 a month in order to get into the higher rent studio apartments. Then there are one- and two-bedroom and three-bedroom apartments, where incomes all have to go up. So in terms of who's going to be living there, it's really not going to be people who don't have an income. They have to have some kind of an income to be able to afford the rents.
Yeah, so that leads me to my next question, then. I know they think, is there going to be any guarantee that they just don't bring in four roommates into one of these students? Now you've got four people living there, paying a $600 a month rent, is any going to, is it going to be like Oxford each unit, it's going to be like an Oxford house, for example?
I don't think you can, I could guarantee that, but I don't think that it is all that common either, and I might ask someone from Home Forward to address that part of the question. As to the management, yes, come on, Hoffman. You'd have to identify yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, and Commissioners, and Amande Saul from Home Forward.
Evening. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me. Our whole team is here, we can answer lots of questions, some of us are in the audience, some of us are online. Should I just start by answering some of Councilor White's questions?
Please, yeah, thank you.
So affordable housing is based on area median income, it's set annually by HUD. So for example, for the area we're in, somebody who fits into rent, they have to income qualify at 60% and below, which for this area is $78,000 a year. So a family of four has to make below $78,000 a year to live in an apartment with a 60% income restriction. We also, as Mr. Trumpke was saying, we also have some units that are set aside at 30%, and that is a requirement of the Metro Bond funding. They require that some units serve people at 30%, some people, some units serve people up to 60%. The Metro Bond funds also require that 50% of the units be two-bedrooms or larger. So people move in based on their income, they have to be able to afford to pay the rent. So we have, we verify income, do background checks, all kinds of rental checks, just like as if you were moving into a regular private market apartment. There's minimums and maximums for units, so if you're moving into a one-bedroom unit, you can't have more than three people in the household, living in the unit. If you're living in a two-bedroom unit, sorry, I have to think about it, there's minimums and maximums for every unit size, so you're not going to end up in a situation where four people are sharing a studio apartment.
You could have three people.
Three people in a one-bedroom.
Yeah, in one bedroom.
Correct.
So I guess that can.
So you could have a married, you could have a parents, a couple, and a child.
And there'll be someone enforcing that?
Yes, yes, we'll have property management on-site, just like regular market rate apartments, you have to fill out an application and pass all of the property management requirements.
So you could potentially have three cars in a one-bedroom unit?
It's possible. What I would say is that's not what we experience in our other housing projects. We own 6,500 units and did a lot of research into our units in preparation for some of the meetings with Planning Commission last year, and we found that people who live in our studios in one-bedroom units tend to have less than one car.
This is going to be the furthest, the most rural one that you guys have done, I would imagine, in Portland, at least in Multnomah County.
We do have projects in Gresham and a project in Catdale.
Yeah, where they have Max and Buster, much better Buster, this, that sort of thing.
Yep.
If I could add, we only have, Troutdale Terrace is the only other affordable housing apartment, multifamily dwelling we have in Troutdale, and it's been there many years. And I will just say, again, we don't know, except for the rules that they have for admissions, but that would be considered a similar type project, and I will honestly tell you that we've never had a problem with residents up there, no increased police calls, there's not been a problem. When we did parking studies, that, of all the different affordable housing complexes in East County, that one had the highest cars per unit, would be 2:00 AM or something, 3:00 AM. You go check, what do the residents really use at this complex? Troutdale Terrace, just up the street, you know, just a couple hundred yards up the street, they use at a ratio of 1.49. Normally, these affordable housing units are somewhere closer to 1 to 1.1 usage by the residents. So based upon the available evidence, the car So based upon the available evidence, the car usages are generally lower than what this development agreement would have them build on site, so.
Really quick, before we continue, I just wanted to welcome Councilor One to the discussion. He's on Zoom currently.
Thanks, Mayor Lower.
Oh, and one more comment. We don't have the rent burden actual last report, but the housing needs study that they reviewed in 2020 said that 32% of Troutdallians are low to very low income and are rate burdened. That's overall, not just in the rental units, but just of our population. It's what the, our own housing needs study reflected. Almost a third of our residents could use some relief in their rent.
Okay. Any other, Councilor Glance?
Yep, I have a question on, I'll start with a general question. Where did we end up on parking? I see something on page 21 of the Developer Agreement Legal Findings, where it talks about there'll be 145 spaces, 109 on site, 10 on street parallel, and then 26 head in on Southwest Second. What's, what and where does that leave us on the ratio?
It's approximately 1.7.
1.7588235, actually.
So, so it's just over 1.7.
And there are the 26 additional head in parking spaces on Southwest Second? Where are those?
Some of, 14 of those don't count because they are public spaces. That they're not, if I.
Correct.
And the, is it 10 that are on the north side, south side?
14, 12.
Yeah, 14 and 12. The 12 head in spaces are on Second and those do count because they are for, primarily for use by residents or staff of the, the housing project. Okay, but the other, the other ones that are purely for the city don't count. They're not in there.
Is 26 not accurate then?
No, it is accurate. If, if that's what's being built on the second street right of way, but.
14 are public, 12 are connected to the Home Forward project.
Does that only be 12?
12 count towards the ratio. The others don't count towards the ratio. That would push the ratio higher.
Okay, so even though we say there's 26, we're only counting 12? Why would we say 26 and only count 12?
Well, because the city controls the 14 and so technically they're not controlled by Home Forward. You guess you could call them offsite parking in terms of the numbers also. Because they're going to be available to anybody, whether it's customers at the Tap House, customers at Eo Pub.
City councilors coming to a meeting.
Coming to the meeting or visitors to Home Forward. They're going to be public parking spots just like the public parking lots.
Okay. And then it says that there's 10 on-street parking spaces on Fourth and Kendall? Is that in any of the areas of the existing homes that we're counting those 10 spaces?
On, just say on Kendall, there are no homes. There's just businesses there and up on Fourth Street, there are several, I'm counting in my head. There's probably seven homes up on Fourth Street.
So we're counting street parking in a residential area?
Yes, your city code does require that. And that was, that was in the code and that's why that was done back in December and in the newer application too.
It's because the reality is, you know, all citizens have the right to park on the street, whether they're renting a home on Fourth Street or whether they're living in Home Forward. And so there has to be some balance to equalize the availability for all residents of the city, wherever they may come from. And that's, that's in the code to allow a certain percentage or small number for that.
Do you have any more questions, Councilor Glance? Okay, Councilor Remma.
Well, following up on the, on the 10, are the 10 spaces on Fourth new spaces that aren't there now? And they'll be built? They're going to be contributed by this development?
No, the, the code allows you to count street parking spaces that your site is adjacent to. That would be true for anybody developing in a multifamily zone site. And so you're allowed to count the on-street parking spaces. So that's what's ref.
Yeah, Councilor, if you look at the map of the project, you will see all along the south, the Fourth Street borders the south of the property. The Home Project will have a street frontage of, gosh, I'm just guessing, 100 linear feet, 120, something like that, where there are no other residences. They just own that parcel on the south edge. And so our city code allows them to count those as offsite parking, on-street parking. It's the same for, whether it's the Fox Ridge or Eagle Ridge, they all get the same right to take a certain percentage of the street parking.
If you, if you go into the site plan drawings, I believe it's the second one and down in the right hand corner are the letters SK and then dash O2. That will show you where the parking spaces are on Fourth Street. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, and then seven, maybe even eight down there at the end. I'm not sure.
But there's a parking spaces that are not in front of any current residences.
Correct. They are in front of the, the property of this development, not any houses down the street.
And, and the same goes for the second street parking places that are on the north side. There's probably 14 of those. Those get counted too?
No, the 14 don't. The, the ones on the south side of Second do count.
And there's 12 of those. Is that right?
Correct.
Right, so there's 12 of those, 10 on, on.
Fourth.
On Fourth, so that's 22 plus 109 off-street parking makes 131. I still don't know where, how we're getting to 145.
If you want to talk, I'm going to have to ask you to come up to the table and introduce yourself at the microphone area. And I think, David, I think that mic is turned off. Not, sorry, Councilor Remma, I meant Berninger. There you go. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Hi, Mayor Lower. Alison Reynolds, I'm with Stoll Reeves. We are the Home Forward's attorney. Sarah Stofford Curtis is another person at the firm who's been working on this, but I'm filling in for her. And so I think potentially I can help clarify this. I think the 145 total parking spaces include all of the parking spaces on Second Street as opposed to just, right, even though some of those are going to be for city uses, some of them are going to be for Home Forward use, I believe we counted all of them and that is how the ratio worked out. But yes, I, I agree with the questions. It's a fairly complicated calculation for how we get to that number, but I think that's where we're at.
Then I apologize for having misstated it earlier, so.
Well, it's a little, that was a confusing, parking being one of the big worries here. Then of the 145 spaces, some of them are on-street parking that are open to the public. They're not reserved for residents of this development. But they're currently not in front of somebody's house. And some of them are kind of newly constructed on Second, but they're also open to the public. They're not reserved for the residents of this development. Is that right?
Correct, yep.
Now, okay. Look, it's, my, I, I would like to reject this development agreement. However, I am very concerned that we would end up doing a worse thing for Troutdale. And I guess I need Ed to weigh in a little bit, but it seems to me, after reading the entire staff report and everything else, if we, I realize we're short circuiting the appeal to the Planning Commission, which I don't like doing. But the worry is that the Planning Commission would turn it down. They turned down the last one. It would be appealed to Luba or to the City Council. We might turn it down too. And we could end up with a development here that has no off-street parking based on the way the rules are right now, dictated from the state. And for that reason, I'm very leery of turning this down. Are there other dire consequences? Ed, have I, am I reading this right, that we could end up?
I, I think you've spoken it as well as anybody could. Those are the potential outcome. That is a potential outcome of it, yes.
I, I actually, it, it seems even like a realistic outcome. We are not being supported by our state or our county in any way for our aspirations for Troutdale, which is to have sufficient off-street parking to accommodate the, being at the outer edge of the metro area. We've always wanted to have sufficient off-street parking so that the city, the people who live here now aren't burdened with a lot of extra parking that they used to have that is taken up by apartments. And I really worry about that. So I, if I thought we had a chance of, even if we, I have to say, I'll just, this is for, even if we win, even if the Planning Commission turns this down and we turn this down, the City Council, and it goes to the state, I, I think we could end up, at least in my mind, looking back and saying, this was a better deal than going through all that. It would hold things up a while, but we could end up, let's just put it that way. So I don't, anyway, I've said my two cents worth. I'll, I'll leave it there.
Councilor Glance?
Yep, my big concern on this is the people on Fourth Street, and I believe that was who the appeal came from. I, I want to protect those people that live there in, you know, their community from suddenly having cars, you know, coming and going at all hours of the night and day from in front of their homes. And so I'd really like a little bit more clarification as to where those parking spots are. And I know in previous meetings, we have even talked about having a resident permit that if you are in one of those homes on Fourth, that you would have to have some kind of permit to park in front of those homes. And I know that street is also an issue because of some of the trucks that are coming and going out of Public Works. And I'm concerned that if we start having parking on, you know, a lot of areas, we may end up with an area where we can't even, you know, on a snow day, get people in and out.
You're, you're right that the appellant is a Fourth Street resident who is concerned about parking. Looking at the, at the maps and the diagrams here, we couldn't find a place to put more parking on Fourth Street. I think those 10 spaces on Fourth Street were already there.
I have.
And so instead, what we had to do was go to the only space available, which was the second street right of way.
I'm fine.
We did there is we got the 26 additional spaces. We hope that that will shift people to park down that end rather than up on Fourth Street. People will generally go where the parking is and so we think that that's just human nature. That's what they'll do. They'll go down the hill instead of up the hill because that's where the parking is. So that was the solution to the, to try to solve the appellant's issue. We got 26 more spaces.
Can we see a map? I have so many different maps in here that look like the parking's in different places that I would really like to see that detail, please. So we're all talking about the same thing?
Right.
I just wanted to respond a couple ways to Councilor Glance's concerns. First of all, it's important for all to remember that we don't really know the overall impact of this development on parking downtown. All the available studies we have are that the parking needs of the residents are going to be less than 1.5. Second of all, our dear Mrs. Sutherland, who I affectionately refer to as the longest continually residing resident of Troutdale since 1967, I have discussed this plan with her. I have given her a copy of the map of the new parking on the north side and talked to her about her concerns about impact on her on Fourth Street. And the last indication that she gave me that if the council approves this additional parking on the north side, she would feel comfortable withdrawing her appeal. You know, we'd all like to have more parking, but there's only so much parking you can put anywhere in this city. And as Ed mentioned and Councilor Remma indicated also earlier, I'll speak for myself, even though I think Ed would jump in on the bet. If, I had to predict, if we did not approve this development agreement, would we get a development with more than 1.7 parking or 1.4 parking? I'd bid my money on the fact that we'll end up with 1.4 parking if we don't approve the agreement. And somewhere down the road, a year or two or three when the project's done, I just don't want to take that chance for downtown Troutdale. And that's why we're encouraging the development agreement.
Councilor One?
Yeah, hey, on Fourth Street currently, at the, what would be the, the west end, what's there now? Like, it looks like the parking that you have booked for up on Fourth, Fourth Street on the street. It looks like it's down past the residences. And so I was just curious, what's there now? Is there parking there now? I'm trying to put it in my mind of a visual and I can't really do it.
There's nothing there. There's no houses. There's Helen Altus Nature Area on the south side of Fourth Street that takes up probably the last 75 feet of Fourth Street. And then on the north side is this parcel itself. Mrs. Sutherland's house is the last house on the north side of Fourth Street. And then from there, there's at least 100 to 150 feet of curb that is not being used at all. I just walked that area today. There's no cars parked at all on the north side past Mrs. Sutherland's house. She also doesn't have any car either. She's just concerned about her landscaper being able to park in front of her house. There was nobody parked from her house to the west and only one car in front of the last house on the south side. And so the curb is pretty well clear all the way to the gates of Public Works.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there's nothing there currently. There's no real designated parking there. So this is going to add parking and I'm sure it's going to probably, they're going to probably have to do some sort of landscaping out there to make it look presentable up along that side of the road. Is that, my understa, is that understanding correct?
Yes, there's a landscaping plan within the package here.
Okay, and is there like stairs down to the two Home Forward, to the facility? Or there's access, I'm assuming, of some sort?
It's a sidewalk.
There's, there's stairs, there's on the east side of the parking.
From Fourth Street?
Okay.
Can someone reiterate that, just so we have it for sure on the record, because someone from the audience stated it.
Yes, there are stairs that come from Fourth Street and they go north, south to enter the property. Because of the lay of the land, it's an upslope obviously, so there's stairs that come down to the parking lot there. There will be access there.
On, on the plans that we're looking at, it appears more like a sidewalk, but there's steps.
Okay. And then can I just get a quick, how many parking spots are physically going to be up on Fourth Street? I'm trying to run through and I can't see.
Six.
Six.
Okay, so six spots. I just want to, okay, thank you.
Councilor Glance, I cut you off earlier.
Yeah, no, I'm trying, can you tell me which page in the packet? I don't see page numbers. The map I'm looking at doesn't have those parking spots indicated. I want to see someplace where there're supposed to be those 10 spots.
If you grab tab BB and the, not the one that has the close up view of the north side, but you look behind it.
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay, on there, you should be able to discern the parking spots. If you look at the. If you look at this, at the Fourth Street, you'll see the little marks on the street there that show 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 parking spots. And if you go up to Kendall and Second, up at the northeast corner of that page, you will see other parking noted. Yeah, that's the driveway. But yeah, there's six on Fourth Street on that north side. And then there's four over on Kendall and Second. Actually, Kendall. If you look where the cul-de-sac is there, they're along that side there.
You said tab BB?
Yep.
The second sheet.
For the second, you flip it over.
Oh, okay, on the back.
But I can't, eight spots there. That's why I'm asking if maybe we can all look at the same map at the same time.
I'm not an architect or engineer.
It looks like there are six and then there are two past the driveways.
Six on Fourth, four on Kendall, and we're not spring. There are six parking spots on Fourth Street that are not specific for our project. It's just the way parking is counted in rezoning code. And then there's four spots along Kendall.
I think it's a driveway into the site that might be adding a little bit of speed.
And note, these parking spots are not in front of anybody's current household. These are simply adjacent to the property being developed. And as I said earlier, essentially provide them the same rights of the residents to park in front of their house, essentially.
Okay, Counselor Whitson, thank you for waiting.
Yeah. The public spots that are potentially going to be, how are those going to be monitored and enforced to make sure that the public is going to have use of those, right?
Well, we've talked about a number of different ways of doing that. A lot of this, again, overall, we have to wait and see what happens when the project is finished and it's populated with people. Because you really don't know the impact until then. And then generally, the city's approach is to work with the property developer, the property manager, if there's any parking problems, to figure out how we work on and solve them. One of the things that we have done in the past is to designate those parking spots as public parking spots. And sometimes in places we say no overnight parking. That way, we ensure that the only people who use those spots are visitors to the apartment, visitors to the tap house, visitors to Yield Pub or whatever. That's one of the things that we've used in the city's parking lot at Second and Kibbling, where there's no overnight parking, which is 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Presumably that the other parking, since all the studies show us that the other parking should be more than ample to handle the residence of the Home Forward project, that this additional 26 parking spots, especially our 14, would not be needed by the residents, but would be transient parking spots. We would make sure we're not for overnight is one approach. But again, a lot of it is, that's in our toolbox. That's what we've talked about. We just have to wait and see. Because I, timeline, you guys think in two years, by the time it's all open and ready to invite people?
If we started, in a perfect world, we would close and start construction this fall, late, late this year, and then we have construction like take about a year. Two years is a good.
Yeah. The, the beauty is, is that first of all, the first tool in our toolbox is to work with the property manager of the property to deal with any parking problems that pop up. The second thing is the city has control of Fourth Street and those 14 parking spots. And so we can make necessary adjustments if it's necessary, if we see a problem is arising. And we've definitely talked about that amongst staff. I've talked to Mrs. Sutherland about that. And she felt good that the city had a plan if there was a problem.
Just wanted to get it on the record.
Yes, it got me on the record and.
And enforcement.
Yes, and enforcement.
Any other comments or questions from Counsel? Before I open it up to public comment.
Counselor Rip. A clarification. When you were talking about access from Fourth Street to the project, to the Home Forward project, you were talking in terms of a stairway. It, it looks like there is also a driveway, isn't there? Yeah, okay. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Counselor Glance?
A legal question. Because we have the parking count in here, does that mean if two years from now, for whatever reason, someone decides there should be less parking? Or does that mean that we are committed to this level of parking?
The onsite parking is one of the conditions of approval. The off-site parking is of course under the city's control, not under the control of Home Forward. So the city wouldn't have the ability to revoke a permit if we change the rules on the off-site parking. But they have to maintain, just like they have to maintain the buildings and the rest of the site under the conditions of approval. It's just standard land use development requirements.
Then is this the time to go into some of the details of the agreement questions? Or is that?
Now would be the time, yes.
On page 10 of the agreement, it's 4.60 Town Center. Is that referring to the Town Center Plan? Because a lot of the, what it meets and doesn't meet goes back to the, what is it called? MU District now? I was a little confused about what was Town Center Plan and how we could say it met the Town Center Plan when it doesn't. It does meet MU.
Page 10 of which document?
The one we've been in. It's the Legal Findings.
Right. It's kind of confusing to me too because at the bottom of it has the letters DA in front of South Coast 10. Second, I always keep thinking of Development Agreement too when I see that. Yeah, this is exhibit D we're talking about attached to the packet, which is the actual resolution itself, which has attached to the legal findings. And page 10 of that document toward the end here is what Counselor Glance is referring to.
It's this one?
Town Center TC. I didn't know if that meant just the Town Center in, as a general term, or the Town Center Plan. This would not meet the Town Center Plan, but it does meet the MU zoning.
Yeah, it does meet the MU zoning. And of course, it only has to meet the MU zoning at this point in time. If we change the MU zoning, then it doesn't, it's, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use and it would be, it would be allowed to be maintained.
So Town Center just refers to the area, not the Town Center Plan, right?
Yeah, it does. But it does go on to say it's within the, the Town Center Plan, which is the document.
Hi, Michael Foo with Home Forward. Chris Heggerman is our land use consultant. He could chime in on this in a better way. But my understanding is that the Town Center reference in the findings corresponds to the Town Center overlay in the Troutdale Development Code. And so it's not the Town Center Plan where, for example, this tract is referred to as an overlap, overlooked tract, but rather the actual zoning code. And if you look in the zoning code and search Town Center, there's a, a chapter associated with it. So that's the reference.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions from Counsel? Yeah, Counselor White.
I, I was at a lot of the Planning Commission meetings. We've been watching them. And it asked, I think Shirley Prickett had asked for a fence. Was that?
There is a fence along 257.
Were there any other nuances like that that were taken out? Is there anything taken out?
No, I, what I would say is we, when we resubmitted our second land use application at the beginning of this year, we stayed really consistent to what we last presented to Planning Commission in December. The only change we made at that point was we had to change, we had parking in the right-of-way before. But then it had to turn into a cul-de-sac because that's what was required when the City Council denied our request. So I believe there was no significant changes. Sorry, I'm looking at my design team really quick. No significant changes, correct? Yeah.
Yes. And, and that was consistent with our discussions as we were working off of primarily what was in front of the Planning Commission in December, other than the right-of-way piece.
All right, if there's nothing else from Counsel, I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment. Public comments open at this time on Agenda Item Number 7, a resolution approving a development agreement with Home Forward on Zoom. If you'd wish to make public comment, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody. Anybody in Counsel chambers wish to make public comment? Now's the time. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I would like to kind of.
Please state your name because this is.
My, my apologies. My name is Adrian Kestner, Troutdale resident and one of the neighbors to the property in question. Couching this in the sense that I absolutely agree with Counselor Ripma in that not approving this is probably going to put us in a worse place than where we would normally be otherwise. But I do want to state a few points just to help inform and improve this as time goes on. I fully acknowledge the need for denser housing in Troutdale and East County and Oregon in general. However, I think a lot of the concerns of the community have not been sufficiently mitigated. They could be yet, particularly with regards to travel and traffic. The traffic studies that have been done with regards to historic Columbia River Highway and Buxton and Fourth and Kendall and Second, I think, have been extremely limited and need to be far more robust in order to truly determine what the impact is going to be to the city and ultimately to the residents. A proposed, or the proposed exit onto Fourth Street would cause significant degradation in livability for those residents if said exit were made available to residents in general. There was an idea proposed at one point to make that a limited access gate to emergency and official vehicles only. I did not see any reference to that in the packaged proposal. As far as I'm concerned, that is kind of an essential element to any design, is limiting access to Fourth Street. Most, if not just for us, but it having, and having a lot of extra traffic there would also impact Public Works. Regarding parking, insufficient off-street parking dedicated to residents will encourage on-street parking as well as gobbling up all the new parking spaces included for the Town Center. Street parking on Fourth Street would increase significantly. Even though it is that frontage for that property, it will significantly impact. Any significant increase in parking on Fourth Street will include, increase or will impact travel up and down Fourth Street for residents as well as for Public Works and would severely impact city services such as the waste collection events that are regularly held at the Public Works facility. Also, just as a general note on the design of the project itself and sort of the intent of the project, very briefly, I'm increasingly unconvinced that this is going to be a nice place to live for the people that are there, largely around the issue of transportation. If people have cars, there's not enough parking for everybody who wants to, who's going to have a car. If people don't, don't have cars, they're living in a food and services desert. And Trimet, at their current funding and services level, is simply not, I don't perceive as being capable of getting these people to where they need to be, even if they do work in the local community. There's no, then they need to get to groceries. They need to get to pharmacy. And if they don't have transportation of their own, there's just not the services to get them there. So I think shoehorning this into this lot, I think is not serving anybody well. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
And I might add, Mr. Mayor, that thank you, Mr. Kestner, because Public Works does dodge parked cars on Fourth, but in front of your home is not one of the areas we'd have to dodge much. So thank you.
Anybody else wishes to speak? Now's the time. Go ahead and approach. Go ahead. State your name and city of residence for the record.
Mayor and Counselors, Shelby Staffordson, Troutdale resident. I agree with a number of things that Adrian said, so I won't reveal those. I will bring up just a sort of different points that I had noticed when I read the document. 2020, let's see, that wasn't on there. The 2020 latest Housing Needs Analysis showed we don't have enough low-end and high-income housing, but we actually have a higher deficit in high-income housing than low-income. But I know this fine, we need to do, I guess, some more low income. But on, and I just was looking at the whole document online. So I say page 73, it talks about the costs associated with the future signalization of Buxton and historic Columbia River Highway. And it says that the condition will expire if the capital improvement project has not begun scoping within three years of the effective land use decision date. And I say, why does it have to expire? We still should collect the funds. So shouldn't we have a full traffic impact analysis done for this project? And at a minimum, shouldn't the applicant's cost be collected now and set aside for this future capital improvement? On the parking, you guys covered a whole lot of the stuff I had questions about, so I won't go into those. But I do ask, one of the things says 40% of the 109 or 44 spaces are EV infrastructure, according to ODL CD Code. So are gas-powered vehicles allowed to park in the EV sites? And if not, then there's only 65 spaces for gas-powered vehicles onsite. Since every parking space is a big deal, couldn't a few more spaces be added to parking lots at the entrance on each side of that lot? That's on the, on the south end. And there looks to be, from me looking at this online, looks like there's kind of some big planted boxes or areas. So using another parking spot or two might be beneficial since we're so worried about that. The Second Street Bridge is on the city's capital improvement projects list. So another concern is the loss of these proposed new parking spots. If the Second Street Bridge is built, the loss of all 26 of these sites plus some in Parking Lot A will definitely add to the parking woes. Personally, I do not find the Second Street Bridge to be something that should be done, so maybe we won't worry about parking spots going away. On page 178 in the resolution, okay, you guys talked about those 14 parking spots. How could we be assured that we could use them? And then these new parking spots that are on the street serve one property. So I think Travis said this before, the city should not pay to maintain it and truly should not give money for this project since it's for a benefit. I guess part of it is for the city, but that was my point. If the city will kick 100, kick in $100,000 for the Second Street improvements, shouldn't it be, is this the max amount that we would be on the hook for? If it escalates or something like that, so I, I think that, which leads me to my last point, which is I suggest that all changes or addendums, et cetera, to this resolution that involve financial impact, be brought back to the City Council for review. And so on that note, I think we have to continue to push back on these mandates that truly affect the livability of our community. I think the state, Metro, all the stuff is just not right. We should be able to control our communities. We shouldn't. So I think we have to keep pushing back. And I think there is, you know, there's a chance that we could win this. So why should we settle? chance that we could win this, so why should we settle? I also know that housing projects have to happen, so I just think that you guys just, I know you're trying to do the best job you can for this city, so I just know it's hard work, but thank you for my listening to me.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Ms. Stephenson. Anybody else wishes to make comment?
Hello, Diane Castillo White, Troutdale, Oregon. I'm on a few committees, but I'm speaking as a citizen today. I agree with a lot of what Shelby just spoke, and I have a, I have a few questions. When I looked at Home Forward to see how you apply for it, because we're talking about servicing our people that worked at FedEx and Amazon, I'm not seeing how you navigate and how they prioritize that. So I don't know if, are we giving higher consideration over Home Forward when they are selecting who goes in to current people wanting to work or working at Amazon and FedEx? That was a question, because that was supposed to be a benefit to us into providing housing for them, and what my, again, when I looked at Home Forward, there's waiting lists for certain projects, so I don't know if it's just you're at the top of the list and you've been waiting the longest, you know, how that works, because those people already have jobs, so they probably need their cars. That's my point. So I think that will also, they will need cars, because they're at the end of Multnomah County if they already have jobs, because they have to have jobs to get into those I wanted to also know if there is, if there is management at site, and, and then, I wanted to, for Mr. Trumkey, that you mentioned, I'm not saying no to low-income, I know we need that. I would prefer that this was somewhere else. I was at the food carts, and I noticed the gorgeous territorial views that that low-income housing was going to have. So most people have downtowns, and then if you have low-income housing, they have multiple streets. We have one street with five blocks, so this is going to be a big impact as to whatever goes there. So I'm proposing that you guys do high-end housing and make money, and then you could find another place for your low-end housing, because you'd make a lot of money, because the views are going to be spectacular from that location. But I am concerned with having management on site, and, and again, I really had preferred another loca, another location within Troutdale. And Mr. Trumkey, I also wanted to know, because I said I'm not discouraging low-income housing within Troutdale, but what was the penalty to those cities that were not encouraging low-income housing in their, in their city? If that's something I could ask.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back around at the end.
Okay, because that's a consideration, because if we're saying that, you know, there's a pros and cons to, you know, select this, and I, and I do hope that, well, for not counting the, subtracting the 14 from the 26, that does change the number, and as everybody stated and I've stated, and meetings at planning, parking is a huge consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane, appreciate it. Anybody else?
Hi again, Sherri Winters, City of Troutdale. So I agree with pretty much everything they said, and there's some points that, like Adrian emphasized, that I would be coming before you on. What I feel like is, it doesn't really matter what I say. The trajectory of this project will be going forward, so my plea is really to Home Forward. I don't disagree with your mission. I disagree with the location. I'm thinking about the people, where they're at, putting them in Troutdale. So when Adrian emphasizes the food desert, I completely agree. At one point this winter, Buxton, Kane, and Hogan were all closed. If you thought you were going to negotiate up the hill somehow, you were in trouble. So if you thought Trimet was coming to help you, you were also, no, it wasn't going to happen. But as I live up the hill, and know that school gets canceled during snow time, so I don't have to be out, but I can go out looking, 257th might be open and might look great, like you go, oh, well, people can get places, but the sidewalks are so full of snow still at that point, and riddled with gravel and everything else, that I would just say that it's another thing that inconveniences people. At least if you were up close to an area where you could get food, or the pharmacy, or whatever, whatever you might need, you'd at least have a closer proximity. Most people wouldn't ask for a low-income housing to be closer to them. I live up by that Safeway. I think it would make more sense if there was a project up there, kind of close to that Shell station, whatever, there's a big open piece of property. It gives them access to so many more things than it does in this downtown Troutdale area, so. And then I also kind of wonder, when you put in EV parking spots, how many people afford EV cars on low-income?
Thank you. We're only down to a couple people that haven't spoken yet. I'm not pointing at anybody, I'm just saying. If anybody else wishes to speak, now's the time. If not, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We're still in public comment.
They may have a contested hearing on August 2nd.
Right, and if they, if they speak and express bias, they might be challenged at that hearing.
That's true.
So it's better that they keep, they're not prohibited from speaking, but they might be challenged if they speak, and so it would be probably advisable that they not, at this point, they keep an open mind in case there is a hearing on August 2nd.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it. All right, I'm going to go
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't have a chance to ask at the beginning, but is this the correct opportunity to respond to some of the public comments?
Not yet, let me close it. Just stay right there. Let me close it. See that? Public comment is now closed, and now we can go ahead and dive back into some of those concerns. Yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you. And I was taking notes, but maybe else, if you want to come up and join me, just in case I miss anything. I just was taking notes on the, on the comments, and some of the questions I can address. There was comment about EV parking spaces, and those are considered EV-ready parking spaces. It's required by code. You don't have to have an EV car to park there, so if you drove a regular gas car, you could park there, so you're not reducing your overall parking spaces.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
It's a code requirement.
Okay.
State code, I believe.
That's important, thank you, I appreciate that.
So I wanted to clarify that. We have had a traffic study done that has been submitted to, to the City of Troutdale, but that addresses all of the intersections that were required by Multnomah County, so that should be available to you somewhere.
It's been in the packets at the Planning Commission, and I, I don't know if it's in this packet, but it was submitted about a year ago, a little more than a year ago, yes.
There's a more recent traffic study that doesn't just look at parking requirements, but also looks at the impact of traffic on certain intersections. You have that information. What else am I missing?
Let's talk about, really quick, let's talk about the Fourth Street access and egress.
Sure.
So has that been discussed as far as design to turn that into a fire access?
Let me start first of all. The concern that we have is that if you don't allow the residents to go down Fourth, they're all forced to go down Second and Kendall, and that creates a bigger parking, I mean, traffic problems by only having one entrance. By being able to come down Fourth, they can come down Buxton from the south and get direct access, but if you restrict it just to that one intersection, it concentrates everybody in the one location, right in front of the police building and another business there, so I think that's part of the reason.
It concentrates, yeah, over there on, in front of the police building and then down onto Columbia River Highway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, that was just a concern.
Yes, I was going to say something very similar.
I just didn't know if it was discussed, if it was studied and obviously
It was discussed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, I was just going to add also that we have been requested and are willing to grant an easement through our property for the maintenance vehicles that are on Fourth Avenue, so in case there's, for whatever reason, snow or too much parking, they, we will grant them an easement to be able to go through our parking lot from Fourth to Second.
Okay.
And then the last issue that was addressed was ownership of the property. I know people have discussed that, you know, this isn't the right place for an affordable housing project, and I just want to say that people, people do get to choose where they live, you know, and so if somebody feels that this is not the right place for them to live, whether it's due to the hill, or the wind, or the potential ice, or distance from a grocery store, you know, they won't apply to live here. I think having choice in where we live is important. And then I'll also add that one of the things that makes this site appropriate for affordable housing is because it is owned by Multnomah County, and they are dedicated to increasing affordable housing, so they see this as a way to meet, be able to leverage the assets that they have to increase affordable housing.
Mr. Ray.
Just to add to a couple of the questions that were asked, the location, since that was just where she ended on was, there is no, any other available location for this project, literally. The reference to the property up on 257th, across from the Safeway and behind the Shell Station, that has been owned by a very longstanding farmer family, and they refuse to sell property. They only want to lease it. So that parcel up there is not available. There are other parcels around the city that we've looked at. The problem with all the other parcels is they're all in private hands, and private owners, as we know in this country, do not have to sell their property if they don't want to, and none of those other parcels are on the, on the market, nor have they shown any interest in selling them. The other attractiveness to this parcel was, is that Multnomah County, whether we like it or not, and I agree with Councilor White, it was kind of sad that they came in right behind us and snatched this property after we tried to buy it, but it is already owned by the, by a government, and that government is committed, even before this project was even twinkling in anybody's eye, they had already told me, they were committed to workforce housing for this property. So the county is already committed to this parcel for workforce housing. And the other thing that is attractive to it is it's right on a bus line, actually, two bus lines. Actually, one comes down 257th, and one goes down Halsey. So having mass transit right there for them is an advantage. So for that reasons, you might want a different spot, this is true, being so close to downtown is difficult, but in reality, there's no other site, and this one made the most sense based on who owned it. In terms of the, the maintenance of it, it is our right-of-way, where this, this parking lot is, and so we have a right to maintain it. However, and I've told our Public Works Director, if you make sure they build it correctly, we shouldn't have maintenance for 20 to 30 years on this, on a flat parking spot, just have to do the lines. In terms of the funds being used, essentially, the city is purchasing 14 or service parking spots. It is coming, it would be coming from the gas tax revenues, which are primarily paid by out-of-city people, the truck stops, the people who drive past town, are the ones who are paying for that $100,000. It is not a general fund expense. As much as the Public Works doesn't like using that fund, that fund is a very healthy fund, if you recall from our budget talks. In fact, we have tried really hard to make sure we spend that money, because we promised citizens we would for better roads. In terms of the Fourth Street access that Adrian was concerned about, Public Works already does dodge cars on that street, as it is now.
Yep.
And as I indicated earlier, once the project is built and populated, the city will absolutely look at any issues that are raised, and we do have the right, if we need to, to one, work with the development, and two, change the parking regulations on Fourth or the 14 spots if we need to, or Second Kendall also, if there's a problem. It's one of those things is that, all I can promise the council is, is that when the project is built, when we know really the impact, we will definitely be evaluating, because like I said, Public Works uses that street, we need to get up and down it, and so we are definitely impacted, and if it's an adverse impact for us providing Public Works services, we will deal with it. And so we appreciate that that concern is legitimate, and we're going to be looking out for it. The only other concern that was raised was Buxton, Kane, and Hogan that might have been closed in the snowstorm. We've got a full report from Public Works, I think in February or March, but all three were never actually closed at the same time, for different things, for different reasons they were, we reported on the actual, what happened that day. It is a concern. I'm just trying to think, is there anything else that was raised that might have, oh?
You can think.
No, go ahead.
I was asked what the penalties might be that are imposed on cities. They are to pay the opposition's attorney's fees and costs in obtaining the needed housing.
So hundreds of millions of dollars.
If you hire my firm, sure.
I don't know about that.
Well, my firm has gotten six figures.
Let's have Stoll Reed's what they would charge for the appeal.
Hundreds of millions of dollars.
So it would be to recoup costs of attorney fees.
Primarily attorney fees, but other costs and fees involved in all of the appeals, yes.
Because I recall the last one, you didn't match up over $100,000 with one of the assessments?
Yeah, yeah, and I think Oregon City is going to get banged really hard in the very near future, because they're being very resistant to a, what looks to me like an ordinary development. They've just got their noses out of joint about it.
Yep.
So.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Glance?
Yeah, back on the topic of the Fourth Street ingress and egress, the reason that I thought that was still going to be a gated was in the early meetings, there were potential residents that testified about needing a safe way to walk the kids to school, and that the development would be having a fair amount of children that would be walking to Troutdale Elementary as a way to get there, and they wanted a safe way to do that that was separate from the cars. And so I don't know if we've just lost sight of that, or if, you know, the community and the potential residents were just not going to consider that those kids' safety, but that was the reason for initially that it was going to be gated.
Again, I will say, that's one of those issues we've dealt with other schools in the area, if there's a problem with safety, we work with the county, we put, you know, safety islands in places, we put crosswalks, like maybe a Fourth and Buxton if it's needed. So those are one of those things, if there's problems are raised, we will deal with them directly. But it is a good concern, because that street, because it was all developed before the rules, there is no sidewalks on that street. Right now, there's a lot of cars parked on the street anyway, and people just walk up and down the street. I'm on there quite often, and traffic is pretty slow. Now Adrian lives at the end of the street on the left, and it's pretty slow. Most of the traffic is Public Works, and if they go fast, Adrian, call me.
Sometimes they do. Sometimes they're in a hurry. Okay, all right, thank you, Sandy. Counselor White?
I was curious about the size of the parking spaces. Are these compact spaces?
Some of them are compact, and some of them are regular. I think that's dictated by your, your code.
The ones that will go to the city on the Second Avenue, right, Second Street right-of-way are full-size, I think they're nine by 18.
Will this project be paying system development charges?
Yes.
I guess, you know, my big concern here is, you know, we, we rely on our planning commission, we don't have the time to do both jobs, and they have been doing this project for how long now? Over a year? And how many meetings have occurred with the planning commission? It's been a lot, so I've done, must have half of them, and it's been a lot of meetings to attend. I just, I feel like they were really close, and they came up with a lot of good suggestions that we would have missed. So I just, I'm not comfortable with taking, taking this over from planning commission. So I guess my question is, if, if we reject this tonight, will it automatically go to planning?
No, but, but Home Forward has offered to go in front of the planning commission, much like tonight, to present it, and even though, even though the appellant has said she will withdraw the appeal, so there will be no formal appeal, we'll still talk with planning commission. we'll still talk with planning commission about it on the, on August 2nd. I think no matter what at this point in time. And if, but if the appellant withdraws, as she had told the city manager she would, then there is no formal appeal hearing at that point. And, but all that said, remember that the planning commission had hearing after hearing through the summer, September, November, December, I think it was, that would have been October. The, they made it better. And, and, yes, to get to there. And this started with the December and, and the 2023, which was primarily the same as the December refined document.
Right, yeah.
So, so this has all of the benefits of the planning commission's work in it, plus it has the parking and it has a few other commitments that we've gotten out of the Home Forward for fundraising.
One more thing to be very clear about, the planning commission has no authority to discuss the development agreement at all. It's not their job, it's not their statutory authority. The only thing the planning commission can do is to make sure that the submitted plans, which only had 1.4 parking, are in compliance with the applicable law. Our staff has determined that it does. If planning commission disagrees and disavows the project, then Home Forward feels confident that if they peel it to Luba, they, they feel confident they will prevail and we will get the 1.4 parking. We will not get the additional parking. So the planning commission really has no legal authority to speak to the, to this. They can only do their job, which is follow the law in terms of applying to the development. And I appreciate your concern, Counselor White. And as Mr. Trumpkin indicated, they have been involved a lot, they have added a lot to this project. And that is why we've also made sure that we are going to, if, if the council approves a resolution tonight, we will make a full report to the planning commission and explain this to them. So we want to make sure we honor them because they are a valuable part of the city.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I'd, I'd love to have, if there's a way to delay this decision tonight and let planning chime in somehow, but the, the pickle we're in is they're not allowed to speak tonight or they should, at the advice of the attorney. And I get that. And it's like, it'd be like us taking over the parks master plan. They did all that work, they did all the open houses and surveys. And right at the end, we're gonna say, no, we, we don't trust your decision making and we're gonna do it for you. And by the way, you're not allowed to chime in. It's just, it just adds to the list of this project, the way it's gone. And I saw a lot of you nodding your head when you said, we don't have to build any parking. I go, would you guys actually do that? I mean, would you consider that?
We would not. I mean, we want, we want our residents to live in a space.
So like, what's the threat then? What's, what's planning finish this off?
But I, I want to say that that's what the law is. The, the law allows us.
Okay, you were agreeing with that.
To build no parking and, and that's the distinction. And, and we have tried very hard to add as much parking as possible. Our architect this year, I'm sure he can go into, you know, detail about how hard we've, we've worked to maximize the parking as much as possible and still meet all of the other requirements around landscaping and stormwater retention. The, the, the design you have in front of you is the most parking we're able to get on the project.
Unless you reduce the number of units.
And we've already done that. We've reduced them from ninety-five to eighty-five.
And I think, I don't think everyone knows that because you're in the town center, your parking standard already is reduced. And I don't think Troutdale's ever approved a project or even had a developer request less parking because they, they recognize the need for it. Most developers want a quality product, which a, a big part of that is being able, having the ability to park. So, and we were promised so many things, you know, we were promised that we could find another location and we, I get a library or a community center or help with this bridge, you know, financial, financial help. I just don't think our, our citizens are gonna, you know, understand why, why we're, we're putting money into the project now and it's coming in below our standard. And if it does become a problem, you guys are gonna be long gone and we're gonna be the ones left to answer to the public.
That's one of the best things about working with Home Forward. We won't be long gone. We, we are a government.
It'll be there, it'll be there forever.
Sure, yeah. And just like all of our projects, we have restrictions on them that require them to be affordable for up to ninety-nine years. We've been an agency that's been in existence since the nineteen forty's? Nineteen forty's. So, I mean, that is one good thing about dealing with Home Forward versus a private developer. It won't be flipped, it won't be turned over to somebody else. You'll, you'll get us forever, whether you, for better or worse.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ray?
Yeah, I just want to recycle this, go back to this again. Counselor White expresses some very legitimate concerns that we've all had throughout this whole process, now going on almost two years come September when it started and all the public hearings. The, the comment that he made, I, I agree with, but it is no longer a reality. Counselor White said, below our standards. Sadly, we're in a new world where our standards aren't the only one that matter anymore, sadly. We are subject to rules come down from people on top of us who have the power to make these rules and we don't like it, but it's no longer our standards. And as much as we've tried to get the most parking out of here, it may not be enough. It may be too much, we don't know yet. But on balance with all the issues that we have to face and the rules that we have to deal with, the, the staff is suggesting that it is not the best solution and we don't meet all the concerns, but it is the best answer to what could be a worse decision. That's what we're trying to avoid here because if it does get built at 1.4, it's going to accelerate the problem to downtown and that's what we're trying to avoid. I mean, if we could get them up to two, I'd love to. But there's just no more room to do it. So, and again, reducing units, you know, that would work too, but however, then their profitability and their whole pro forma falls apart when they can't get enough income to support the project. So, and I know they like, if you look at their other projects around town, they do a really good job of nice projects that look good and they manage them well. And I remember, gosh, over two and a half, three years ago, we met out in Fairview with your team and my first important question to them was, will you have an onsite manager? Their answer was yes then and it's yes today. And that's a big deal for a city manager to know that that project is gonna have onsite management because that's where you get into problems where the residents are just on their own without somebody in charge. So, anyway, I appreciate your concerns, Counselor White. I just, at this point, I wish we could get them to follow our standards, but our standards have been ripped away from us, from the powers that be, to a certain extent.
Counselor White?
Yeah, thanks. I think I just want to, I want to kind of go off what Ray said is, I kind of came into this late, I wasn't part of this process before. I, after kind of getting kind of the history of everything, I feel like maybe an opportunity was missed in December. And these new standards came down, again, from the powers that be. And I just want to encourage us all in the council to think about, think about where we're at and the hard work that our staff has put into this to create the best case scenario within the rules of, of, of the state, within the law, and taking into consideration everything. I think and I feel pretty strongly with what we have put in front of us is a good kind of compromise between, this project's gonna go forward, I think, pretty much no matter what and we can spend endless amounts of hours and money as a, as a city putting into this to fight it, to fight it, to fight it. And in the end, I think we're gonna lose. And I think that the city, the city staff has worked really hard to work with Home Forward to create, again, the best case scenario. We have, we've used the right of way, we still have control of it, but we've utilized it, this right of way that had no, there was nothing that was gonna be doing with it, to now having 14 parking spots for, you know, downtown Troutdale, for people to come, park in and utilize. And then the other side, again, Home Forward, they're increasing the amount of parking they have available for their residents. I think that it says a lot that the person who filed the appeal will withdraw it if we approve what's in front of us today. I think that says a lot to the person who is directly impacted by, by this. And I realize that there are a, a lot of other aspects that have gone into this, planning, lots of people's hard work. And I appreciate everybody's hard work to try to create the best case scenario for the city of Troutdale. But I think that what we have in front of us is gonna probably be the best case scenario with the least amount of money that the city will have to spend. And so I just want to encourage us all to think really hard about, about that and then what the flip side of that would be if we were to, to turn this down. So anyways, I just appreciate everybody listening. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Caswell?
Yeah, I want to acknowledge the, the staff and, and every on staff for your very intentional problem solving with this. And I think that that's really of great value in just relationships everywhere, our ability to do that. And I think here comes a time when it's like diminishing returns, you know, to keep just trying to come to like a personal level of comfort with this still, right? Like, I think we all have our personal opinions, but I think we need to know when to, when to pivot. And I, I really like what, what staff has come up with here. I think it's a good balance. And I actually, I think we owe them a, a thanks for their efforts and, and the finesse it takes to do this job. So that's, that's where I stand on it. I'm in support.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, any other comments from counsel? Counselor Glance?
I have one last one. On the actual resolution, on page two, item number nine, the very last line talks about provide a valuable and desirable. Do we have to use the word desirable? I can't think of any reason that desirable. It may be necessary and it may be valuable, but I don't see this as desirable. And that's also repeated down in the very last line, the same page, section two, where it's valuable, desirable and necessary. I do see this as valuable and necessary, but not desirable.
I guess that's a question for the, the two land use attorneys sitting here.
It's page two of the development agreement? I'm sorry, I'm looking at that.
The resolution.
Resolution, the actual resolution language. Page one, I'm sorry, page two, section nine.
That is what's there and if, if the, if a motion is made to consider the resolution, you can always make a motion to delete that word. That is always appropriate.
Okay. Any other comments for staff or for our representatives from Home Forward? Counselor Whitaker?
I will just chime in as well as most other, my, my peers have said as well. And the way Ray started this whole thing out of, we're gonna walk away from here probably neither one of us, either side of the table are going to like this and get everything we want. And being part of that planning commission for a good portion of this, it was a lot of hard work on both sides, going back and forth, give and take and, and working together. There, there was a lot of effort, definitely. But at the end of the day, we have to do what's best for Troutdale and that's what we're all in charge to do, to make the best decision going forward and what the, the long-term effect is gonna be best for them and best for us and our community. And I think today's option is probably gonna be our best option going forward. It's my two cents.
Okay, thank you. I'll say that I was one that was not excited about this project. And it wasn't because of the project. It was just, it's just another example and another slap to the face as to how much we don't control in our own city. That's what I don't like. That's not your fault. You're benefiting from that. But I see, I see this project as something that hopefully somebody, some people in Troutdale can also benefit from. So I'm choosing to no longer hold you accountable for things that you don't control. You, you have the land. You've negotiated well with our staff, you've worked well with our departments and our, and our staff, with our legal team. And I think that what we're coming away with is not ideal for Troutdale, for Home Forward, but I think it's going to be the, the best project that we can expect moving forward. And I think that can, that can begin a good partnership with us, with this council, with your depart, with your staff and coming together and creating a project and a livable community inside of our city that will hopefully service the people that need these services. Again, I don't, I don't like how it happened. We're not there anymore. I don't like the parking, we're not there anymore. I don't like C-FEC, we're not there anymore. It is what it is and I think we're gonna, I think adapting and overcoming things that we all don't like is just gonna be a part of our near future and future going on in, in, in Multnomah County and the state of Oregon. So while I don't, I, I will just say I understand and I appreciate the work that you've all done with our staff and the work that your legal team has done with our legal team moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Can I just say really quickly that I have appreciated working with your staff? And it's, it's been very collaborative, it's been very supportive. We've tried to come up with solutions together and I believe this is gonna be a really great place for people to live. You know, I want to build housing that is, I'm creating a place that, that I would be proud to live with my family. That's kind of a baseline for me. And I think we've come to a really great middle ground that hopefully is providing Troutdale with what's important to you, which I know is parking. You've been consistent in that all along, making sure your downtown businesses are not negatively impacted by this project. We don't want that either. So I just, I think this has been a good partnership to get to this, to get to this project that hopefully will be a great place to live someday for people who live in Troutdale.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. All right, if there's nothing else, we can move forward. Counselor White?
One final question. Just curious, how, how often does Home Forward give a free piece of land to do a project like this? Has it ever happened before?
Oh, sure, yes. I would say that oftentimes jurisdictions, land bank, they, they buy property and hold it for affordable housing. And then when they're putting out a NOFA to allocate funding, they'll put out, they'll say, we have available in this, in this notice of funding availability, both land and funding to create approximately X number of affordable units. So this is, it's not uncommon.
It wasn't actually free, the taxpayers paid for this one. And, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, as a business minded person, if, if I was given that piece of land, I would be tripping over myself to, to follow the rules and do whatever I could to fit in and make this project work for this city. It's just my final thought.
Okay, thank you, Counselor White.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Trumpkin?
Yes, I'm hoping this will be the last thing. When I thanked the Home Forward people, I left someone out. Allison Reynolds, who walked in at the last couple of meetings, took over for Sarah, who went, went out of town. Thank you so much. You really came in and picked it up and ran with it. And that's not an easy thing to do because it's pretty complicated. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. All right, I would entertain a motion.
And we're removing the word desirable?
If that's your motion, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the resolution approving the development agreement with Home Forward as amended.
Will that be sufficient?
You should say how you amend.
Yeah.
Removing the word desirable from the resolution? From, on page two.
Section nine.
Section nine.
And. Sandy, hang on a second. Sandy, go ahead and, and say where you found it again.
Yep, uh, number nine at the top of uh, the page. It's the second number, last uh. First word of the last sentence of nine and then next to the last word on the page.
It's in a line of adjectives, so it seems that I'll wait for Mr. Comby to agree that that doesn't change the ultimate resolution itself. But it does simply remove what the council appears to consider some improvements.
I'll second, second that motion.
Sarah, did you get that? Okay. Alright, seconded by Counselor. Thank you, Counselor Glance, for that clarification.
Mayor Lauer.
Begrudgingly, yes.
Counselor White. Counselor Whitman?
Begrudgingly as well, yes.
Counselor Glance?
Uh, lesser of two evils, yes.
Counselor Ripma?
No.
Counselor Caswell?
Yes.
Counselor One?
Yes.
It passes. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for staff, planning commission, for everybody. Ed, thank you for your work on this. Um, like I said, it's, now we get to work on building the relationship and, and, and building a good community and a good development. And holding each other accountable to make sure that we, we do the best thing that we can for Troutdale. Thank you.
I'm here for it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody. We're gonna move on to couns, or agenda item number eight. Uh, I was gonna move right on to council communications. I don't care what Ray has to say anymore. Let's go to staff communications, Ray.
Thank you, Mayor, and your feelings are not uncommon among people who know.
I thought you were gonna say mutual.
Yeah, uh, first of all, I have good news and bad news. The good news is, is that we will not have another council meeting until August twenty second. So this is the summer break. Of the bad news is, except for the U R A meeting, we're gonna have it about five minutes. But it should not be long, I don't anticipate. Um, second of all, don't forget, we have two great movie nights before the next council meeting. On July twenty eighth and August eighteenth. Got some great movies, including one of my all-time favorites, Princess Bride. What?
Fight Club?
No, this is for families and children.
Oh, okay.
The Mario movie, you know, and oh, the old Sandlot movie and Princess Bride, one of the best of all time. Anyway. Great with family fun, everybody to come out on those two dates. First Friday, again, will occur on August fourth. Um, we had a great one last Friday night. If anybody got the chance to be there, beautiful weather, uh, wonderfully attended. And finally. Counselor White is wonderful about doing what he's been asked. Um, all council members were asked to make sure they get ahold of Sarah to let her know. By tomorrow, if you want to go to the LOC conference in Eugene in October. Because there is a roulette wheel that she has to spin first thing Thursday morning, if you want to stay at the convention hotel, the graduate. Whatever, okay. But please let her know tomorrow, tonight, um, if you would like her to register for the L C conference. And if you would like her to try to get you a room at the conference hotel. So, uh, we have, this. Counselor White is on the list first.
And Counselor Ripma.
And Counselor Ripma, good. And that is all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council communications, I'll go first since I voted first tonight. I'll say that this is not, this was not a easy, this, we've had lots of non-easy decisions in this council since I've been here. For uh, city councillor and his mayor. This was not easy. Um, but I will ask the citizen, you know, you don't have to hold Counselor White or Counselor Ripma accountable. You can hold the rest of us or just me accountable. Uh, making sure that what happens over there is, is best for Troutdale and not for Home Forward. Um, so my plea is just. Hold me accountable. Hold the city accountable. Uh, we'll do our best to create that continued relationship moving forward for that development, so. But it's difficult when the land is free and we have no say on whether or not it happens. So, um, with that being said. First Friday was amazing. It was fantastic last week. Um, we had a great time. Uh, saw council, council president Ripma down there. It was nice to see you in person. It's been a while, so it was good seeing you on the sunshiny day. Uh, everybody else enjoy their summer break. Be safe at the river. Don't do anything stupid, make good decisions. Uh, Counselor White?
Well, like, the reason for my no vote, uh, was two things. One, I, I had faith that the planning commission. Would, would see the same thing we saw, that we're up against a rock in a hard place, but also that. To me, it was a error that it should have been a type three error. It shouldn't have had to been a deal. It was definitely controversial, like. One of the most controversial ones I've ever seen in Troutdale. So, so mistakes were made. I'm gonna hope for the best, but I'm not, I'm not so confident it's gonna work out. And on a lighter note, um, uh, Sugar Pine is having their fifth anniversary on Sun, this Sunday.
Oh, yeah.
And they're actually booked, uh, Portugal, the man, the band, I guess. Some of the band members actually live in Troutdale.
Yeah, they live on the river. Oh, I shouldn't have said that. To all the millions of people listening at home, you now know where Portugal.
Can't believe it's been five years, but I'm happy for Sugar Pine and they're definitely an asset to the city. And um, I did have, one concern is I noticed the two-hour parking license signs went up in downtown. On our beautiful lamppost, by the way, they look, they don't look very attractive, but. I don't know how that came up, you know, without council knowing about it. Cause I, we gave you a hard time over bike racks and that, and now we got this one, maybe it's occurred.
It's the county road. I'll ask, I'll ask Travis where those came from.
If we could look into it, cause we've always said in the past, no, we, you know, we wanted to, you know, eat dinner and go shopping. And it takes longer than two hours.
Another long discussion, but yeah, we have a history of how we handle parking on downtown and it's been to encourage people to come and park and not encourage employees to park on Main Street.
I was just gonna give a shout out to Corbett and Springdale for their wonderful parade. I, I know Counselor One was there, I saw him in his truck. And uh, it was a great event. And I tell you, the Corbett Fire Department has some beautiful, brand new equipment and uh, lots of it. That's all I have to say.
Counselor Whitman?
Uh, I really don't have much, but do you have one question for you, still being kind of the newbie? Number one on the agenda always says the Pledge of Allegiance, but we never say the Pledge of Allegiance. Why is that?
So.
But yet we do in other committees and.
One of the reasons why I didn't do it is because we're separated. We're half here, half not. Um, I feel like the Pledge of Allegiance should be something done when we're all here together. That's just my way of thinking. It's not because I don't, I bleed red, white and blue. And it pains me every single time I do this. But I'd rather do it when we're all together and we can all observe that flag and what it stands for together and not on Zoom. That's why.
So being as nothing's probably ever gonna change from Zoom going forward, though.
That's not true.
I don't think so?
No.
Okay.
There's always possibility for in-person. But that's the honest answer. It's not a good one, but that's the one I got.
Any, anytime you wanna start it again, I'll support you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is that it?
Yep.
Counselor Glance?
Oh, yeah, on Pledge of Allegiance, a lot of the other committees are uh, hybrid and they still say the Pledge of Allegiance. FYI, um, wanna go back just one uh, bit on what we just proved begrudgingly. And I wanna make sure that the Fourth Street residents stay protected. Um, and I know that there was conversation tonight about making sure that, you know, we'd monitor that. And I just wanna reinforce that at one point, when I thought there was gonna be parking along there, I would have been a no vote. Uh, that's, to me, one of the most important things we can do is protect the people uh, who live there currently. So. That was just my last comment. I'm done. Have a good summer holiday, everybody.
Counselor Ripma?
I'll say, uh. I look forward to getting a, you know, six weeks off or however long it is. And I hope everyone has a great summer. And we'll see you in August.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Caswell?
Yep, nothing for me.
And Counselor One?
And I'm gonna go again, I'm gonna go again today. I wanna break that streak, but um. I appreciate you guys inviting me in late to the meeting. I apologize. Uh, had to go to my son, coach my son's baseball game. We unfortunately did not prevail, but uh, the kids are great and uh, we had a good season. Um, I just wanna kind of reflect back on our discussion that we just had and say, I don't take. I never take these things lightly as I have uh, acclimated into my, my position here. Um, and I don't say I wanna just do something because it seems like it's the right thing and it's the easy thing to do. Um, sometimes I think we're within constraints of uh, the system and the law and it's not always great. These. Um, sometimes projects are not the most ideal things. Um, but I think within some of the constraints, we have to make sacrifices. And I wanted to say that I appreciate all of the staff's work that they put into that um, discussion project over the period of time. But came before me and the time that I've been here. So I um, appreciate uh, the collaboration that we've had. And then um, I wanna just uh, kind of double down on what uh, Counselor White said. Springdale and Corbett put on a wonderful and uh, festive Fourth of July celebration. It was amazing. Uh, it just really puts you in the spirit of not only what a small town uh, like that can bring. Um, but just the fun and uh, overall great time that we had celebrating. It was a, it was a lot of fun and that we appreciate, appreciate their neighbor-ness, I guess, would say. And I hope everybody has a safe uh, summer. And um, enjoy your vacations, whatever you do. So, thank you.
So don't go anywhere. We have one more meeting. Counselor Ripma?
Uh, I move we adjourn.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Alright, it's on the same link, correct, Sarah?
Yep.
Okay.
Not exit out of this meeting.
Don't leave out of this meeting. Uh, let's take, let's take a couple of minutes, if you wouldn't mind. We'll be back here at. Let's go, let's go five minutes, ten-ten. Thank you, everybody. I shouldn't have said that. I shouldn't have said that. Shouldn't have thrown a sock at me or something. Let's see if I have enough battery life in my computer.
You don't need to put this in the meeting minutes itself technically, but as I told Mayor earlier today and I told Counselor White an hour or two ago.
Let's save it. Let's save it.
Okay.
Let's save it.
Is it your birthday today?
No.
Oh, we, we all want to say that.
I almost spent the entire day.
Paul, Paul would have sang Happy Birthday to you.
No, he's not here. Alright, let's call the order this special uh, Urban Renewal Agency meeting for July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Let's take a roll call, Sarah. Uh, are we all back? I'm sorry, everybody back? Alright, Allison, are you there?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
Alright, Director Ripma?
Here.
Director Caswell?
Here.
Director One?
Here.
Director White?
Here.
Director Whitman?
Here.
Director Glance?
Present.
Mayor Lauer?
Here, thank you. Uh, agenda item number two, public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest. Or related to matters which may or could come before the agency. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by. The presiding officer with consent of the agency. Um, anybody on Zoom wishes to make public comment, now's the time. Go ahead and unmute yourself. State your name and city of residence for the record. Alright, anybody in council chambers tonight wishes to make comment, now's the time? Okay. Let's go ahead and close public comment. We have agenda item number three, public hearing resolution, a resolution approving an exclusive negotiation agreement between the city of Troutdale. And through its Urban Renewal Agency and Capstone Partners LLC concerning the confluence at Troutdale Project. Mr. Berniker?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you said, this is a resolution, resolution before you this evening is to approve the E N A. Between the city of Troutdale and Capstone Partners that are going to set. The exclusive uh, negotiate, negotiation agreement or E N A provides the right for Capstone to negotiate with the adjacent property owner. To the west of the project site, um, the potential ingress and egress through or acquisition of a strip of land on the adjacent property. Um, project site. Negotiations will include discussions about obtaining title or acquiring access through the adjacent property. Owner and enabling direct access between two fifty-seven and the larger project site. Um, this is the first phase of negotiations, um, and they're effective per council's vote. And between the Urban Renewal Agency and Capstone Partners. Assuming that the conversations are fruitful, the U R A and Capstone will negotiate the terms and conditions of the second phase. Of the exclusive negotiation process concerning the scope of the proposed development, including determination of the feasibility of the redevelopment. Just wanna take a moment to say here that, um, you know, and I've talked about this in the past. Um, this evening, we're not getting into the details of the agreement. All we're trying to do at this, at this stage is to cut the consultants loose. To begin having a conversation with the owners of, of the site and time equities. So this is just the very first step in the process. You are giving them approval to start that dialogue. Um, this evening, if you still vote that way. The terms of the agreement shall um, shall terminate a hundred and twenty days. After phase one is executed. The terms may be extended up for a maximum of two additional sixty-day periods upon a mutual agreement. Of Capstone and the Urban Renewal Agency. And that's all I got.
And we will add also to, add on to what David said is, um, this is not a time in the schedule that we would involve citizens such as the T-Cab. Or the council. It's when, if this is successful and we, this agreement expires, that's when we'll get into the details of the real development. And we will absolutely engage the public. We'll absolutely engage the public and the T-Cab at that time, but until we get to that point, there's really nothing for them to give input on at this point.
This is, this is the drinks before the dance.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the second phase is when we'll kind of work out scope of work in more detail. And we'll look at the validity of the project. This is just kinda making that introduction to that person on the other side of the room.
Okay. Uh, comments from Counselor Glance?
I have two questions. Who determines the extensions? If we decide to go sixty days or more, who determine, who signs off on that?
I'm guessing it's you all.
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you said guessing, but for sure.
All he saw was a vacant look for a half second.
It would be us, yes.
Uh, and then my second question is on the staff report. Uh, page two, the last pro is it says Capstone to provide the U R A via staff. Monthly updates on discussions, but in the E N A, on page one, third paragraph. It says that the Capstone is providing those uh, to the U R A. And it also says that on page two, uh, item number three, uh, near the last part of that paragraph. Personally, I kinda like to hear from Capstone and especially if it's, you know, something where we're having drinks for a potential dance. I'd like to. You know, get to know them a little bit.
If that was council thinks differently, I think that's reasonable.
Ray shaking his head, yes.
Yes, absolutely. Whatever we know, we will communicate to you.
Yeah. Is that it, Sandy?
I have two questions.
Okay. Anybody else? Comments for staff before our public hearing? Counselor White?
Um, on section two, on page one, two, I guess, on page two. So it's talking about the city manager Ray Young and community development director Dave Franklin will be authorized, doesn't it? And that's just for this resolution here?
Yeah, there's sometimes maybe tweaks that have to be done to fulfill the intent of council and it makes it easier for us to be able to do those tweaks. Anything significant, of course, we'll let you know. It's just to make it easier to get moving quickly. Yeah. Generally standard and it's just for minor stuff.
Counselor Glance.
Yeah, who determines in these negotiations what our price would be? Because I'm assuming we're going in there, we're looking to, I mean, Capstone's whole model was to have the road through the outlet mall and so that would come back to some costs to Troutdale or the URA. How, who and how and how do those costs get determined or negotiated?
That's, that's down the road ways. The, the negotiating agreement is really just to get Capstone talking to the neighboring property owner. After they get to that point, then we can flesh out kind of a Phase Two exclusive negotiating agreement that has a lot more detail in it about what is going to be planned for development. Then the third piece is a, is a development agreement and that's where prices and numbers get built in. That's down the road. We had hoped to do this in two phases, but in terms of writing the exclusive negotiating agreement with all of the details, it became impossible just because they haven't talked to the neighbors about what they can and can't do. So they need to get that fleshed out before we can really flesh out what the, and what the DD, the development agreement is going to look like.
So all they're basically doing is just making a contact?
They're contacting them, talking to them about what is doable and what's not, what, what kind of cooperation they'll get, what kind of hostility they'll get. Maybe they can do some pieces jointly. And that affects what the, what the rest of the world will look like in terms of the urban renewal area. So they need to talk before they can really say, yeah, we can really put a hotel here or yeah, we can really build the parking there. Because, you know, they don't have enough information.
And, and this ENA is basically empowering Capstone.
That's correct.
We, we are giving them permission to enter into these discussions.
Yes.
Because we have agreed to, we have selected them.
Said another way, it was just kind of premature to start skoping at council without getting what we heard in the interviews. So we just needed to kind of kickstart that conversation. Hopefully it'll go smoothly and then we can come back and our team will put together more definitive things to add to the schedule board as council said.
Any other comments from, or the board, the agency? Keep saying council. All right, let's open up the public hearing. Public hearings open now on agenda item number three, a resolution approving an exclusive negotiation agreement between the City of Troutdale and through its Urban Renewal Agency and Capstone Partners LLC concerning the confluence at Troutdale Project. On Zoom, if you would wish to address the agency, now's the time. Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody. Anybody in council chambers tonight wishes to comment? Yeah, go ahead.
Shelby Stafferson, Troutdale resident. I just wanted to say that I'm super excited about this project and I am just so hopeful that members from the TCAB committee are going to be very involved because they're so excited about this. And I just, offense, but I think they're super excited about it, so excited about it. And with us having consultants and staff, I don't know if they're as excited about it as. So I really want to see members of that committee and make sure they're involved because I swear that it seems like they're going to be so passionate. They're going to help to work out the relationship, really make it happen. So that is our two cents worth. I just really want to see their involvement. They just have so much, they spent so much time planning the town center plan, but I just really think that they've got to have skin in their skin. You've got to be involved, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sherry Winters, Troutdale. Yes, I agree with what Shelby just said and. I appreciate staff, however, staff is not elected or somehow kind of scrutinized into being part of Troutdale all the time. You know, all those impacts and I would like to see some additional people from, from the actual city. You know, residents being part of it the entire time to make sure that we are our voice and everything is being heard, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And gone. Anybody else?
Good evening. Mayor Lauer, Troutdale Council, Tanny Staffenson, Troutdale resident. And I just had one question. In the resolution, we talk about executing the resolution in the best interest of the city. And I was just, does that mean like financially? Because we're doing it without any other action by council. I just wanted to understand what is involved in that piece of it. Because we know, you know, from reading the, the document, the access is critical to it. So what does that mean? Does that mean we go out and we're going to get access? You know, at what point does it come back to the council or the URA or the public or how does that work? I guess that was my first question. And then my other question would be, is there going to be a group involved in that process at all? I'm guessing not. That's my other question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Hi, Diane Steelwhite, Troutdale, and I'm, I am on TCAB. And this is our second effort trying to do something awesome for the citizens here on the waterfront. I also would like, if possible, a member from TCAB to be involved in all phases and all the steps. We had some long discussions and we know the heart, the motive, the intent and why we did choose Capstone. And so I just think it'd be, it'd be really a good contribution for, for one of us to be, that have gone through all the phases and that again, know what we, what our understanding was, why we picked Capstone and that just another person to advocate for the heart and motive of why we did select them and to just to, to be involved as well. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
John Lamy, part of TCAB. And I think what Commissioner Glance might have been asking was in the negotiation with the property owner next door, there'll be a cost to acquire this access. And I think that that is something that's probably going to come up earlier in the discussion than the next phase. So I think that maybe that's what she was asking is about that financial, who's going to be responsible.
I think so.
If I'm right.
All right, nobody else? I will close the public hearing. So.
Did we have an answer for Tanny's question? I was looking at Ray and.
Yeah. I thought I'd answered it earlier, but maybe not.
I thought so too.
Ask me again.
I thought so too, I thought you.
Ask me again, Mr. Staffenson.
My question?
Yeah.
Okay, so to the extent of executing the resolution, what does that mean as far as the city goes, such as like financially?
We are not committed financially to anything. Essentially, what the agreement does, and it can correct me, is it simply gives the signet ring of the City of Troutdale to Capstone that they can now go with authority and talk to the mall owner. And the mall owner knows that, who are you guys? Oh, the City of Troutdale has an agreement with you that you can begin making due diligence work on your project. And so when they finish that three, four month process, they will learn everything they need to know about what they can or can't work with for the mall owners. And then they will come back to us and say, all right, guys, this is what they'll do or not do. We need your help on X, Y and Z. That's what triggers us and the TCAB getting involved to start discussing, okay, what did you learn? What do we need to do to make this work? And then we have to decide whether it's worth it or not, and that's kind of the point. So it's their chance to go out and do a scavenger hunt and then they come back and tell us what they find. That's all this agreement does, we're not committed to anything financially. Correct?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
If they want to fly to see, to New York to see folks, they get to pay for it themselves, they get to do it all themselves.
I hope they're going to go see Francis, actually.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
I know it's late, but I had asked at the last, you said you have a 90% plan for the trail and there was.
Oh.
Talk about the.
Since I, I made you wait.
Made you wait. I am so thrilled.
He was going to bring it up.
Yeah, this morning at 6:30, Stuart Finney, who is the engineer who's working with Zarken Design to do our trail. He's been doing the engineering work with Unitive Railroad. We have been waiting. Ah, the stories that I could tell about UP losing our file and not knowing who was in charge and delaying and delaying and delaying. But Terrell Anderson, who has been the person overseeing this for 15 years, sent us an email today saying, all right, we approved your 60% design with a couple tweaks. Include them in the 90% and send it to us for another review. So we have crossed another hurdle for the trail. And every hurdle we cross, the next one usually is smaller than the last one. So we're in their queue and so we are hoping, based on last experience, it takes probably, they say six weeks, but I anticipate at least two months. And so at this point, we're looking to the end of September, first October, that we hope they approve our 90%. And then at that point, we are ready to go for bids. Put together, it takes some time to do their proper bid package. It's a complicated project, you know, four and a half million dollars. But Travis, who is a very by the book engineer and very cautious by nature, he agrees with me that if this continues in this path, we could be moving dirt next spring for the waterfront park and trail. Exciting after 20 years or more of waiting, we may be ready to push dirt.
Great. Director Glance.
Yeah, is there any reason, I appreciate that at some point when it's, you know, dollars and cents negotiations, there may need to be some closed meetings. But couldn't we keep TCAB at least informed the same way the URA is, URA group directors? You know, up to that point, like through this first phase at least.
There's no reason I can't just CC the TCAB also, if I have any reports. I mean, a lot of this is just dependent upon what Capstone tells us or reports to us. It may be, oh, we're going to be going there next month. We have a date scheduled to meet with them on this date. No reason I can't CC TCAB and the council, their report.
That would be great, thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions for staff? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I move, I move a resolution approving an exclusive negotiating agreement between the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Troutdale and Capstone Partners LLC.
It's actually in the staff report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And seconded. Seconded by Director Whitton.
I have a question, should there be a resolution number?
They're assigned after they're approved, so we don't have any skip numbers.
They don't, they don't get assigned until after they're adopted, then they're, they're numbered in order.
Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
Cheryl Lauer.
Yes.
Director White.
Yes.
Director Whitton.
Yes.
Director Glance.
Yes.
Director Rittman.
Yes.
Director Caswell.
Yes.
And Director One.
Yes.
All right, passes, thank you, everybody.
I move we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, everybody, thank you very much for the long evening, have a good night.
Happy summer.
Have a good summer.
I have 4% battery life left on my computer.